Some of them kind of blend together, he said, and so he can see the edges.
At what purpose?
He's got a hard time identifying the edges of the cutouts, the driveways.
You have to decide.
I don't know. Yeah. You know, we got a few around town that are like three to six feet, uh, where people had, if we're parking too close to some of them, especially around the Corn Palace area here. But I don't know if we've marked many of the other ones in town, so.
It'd be a little difficult just to do a blank.
Cart block.
Cart block.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's any specific ones that he would like to bring to the attention, and then maybe we should contact the businesses and, and, uh,
See what they have.
Let us know that if we can possibly bring this up.
Okay, I can sure visit with him after this and see if he can give me a specific list or something.
Yeah.
Like that, if we want to table it till next meeting and see where it's at.
I think so. I would like at least a list of which ones he's interested in.
Yeah, I did try and get it narrowed down.
I don't want to obtain 5,000 curb cutouts around town, but.
Yeah. Okay. I can do that.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. A motion and second to table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion will be tabled. Next, the heart and soul of cancer, walk run board of directors would like to request that the city of Mitchell close Eighth Street from Minnesota Street to Iowa Street and the Cadwell entrance to Eighth Street on Friday, Friday, June 19th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the cancer walk run event. This is a reoccurring event that we've done for a number of years. No. Motion?
Second.
Second. Any, uh, any other additions or comments?
Uh, well, there, did we do a fireworks permit for this?
We did.
Already?
Yep. Nothing else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion's carried. Next, the tour de corn committee would like to block off a portion of the city hall parking lot and the adjacent street. Uh, the 100 block of East 7th on Au- August 22nd from 7:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. for registration, and they're also requesting a police escort and traffic control at 23rd and Main at 9:30 a.m. that same day. This is an event we've done a number of years also. Is there anybody here to speak on this? If not, uh, we've.
With General Connell, with this, that's all we need.
Standard thing we've done every year.
Yeah, but because we're not having it on the weekend of the, of the Corn Palace, we want to block, we'd ask for this out here so we don't block it.
Okay. The parking lot and the 100 block of East 7th. Yep.
Move to approve, second.
Motion and second. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion's carried. Next, the summer solstice committee requests to close Main Street from First Street to Third Street at 4:00 p.m. on June 19th, 2015, and then, uh, close Third Street to Seventh Street. Uh, I believe that's still on Main, 7:00 a.m. to June, 7:00 a.m. on June 20th, 2015. The streets will reopen by 8:00 p.m. on June 20th, 2015. Is there anybody here to speak on this that would want to clarify anything? If you want, you can step to the podium. Just identify yourself and. You'll have to come up to the podium here.
Hi, I'm Carrie Kirkmeier from Mitchell Main Street and Beyond.
Katina Kost, Mitchell Main Street and Beyond, and get pinned.
And Katina's kind of the expert because she was here last year when they had the first summer solstice, and so we did include a diagram with the application, um, just kind of describing how we would like the street blocked off and what we will have on each, uh, block. Are there any certain questions you had about it?
Very similar to last year.
Uh, the only change is from 6:00 until 9:00, there'll be a DJ dance at the intersection of Third and Main. Uh, when we submitted this, this dance was originally proposed to be down at, um, the depot. We've now changed it to be on Main Street, so this needs to be amended to say 9:00 instead of 8:00.
And no alcohol this year?
Yeah, no alcohol.
Okay.
What time will it be over?
The dance itself is done at 9:00. The vendors start leaving Main Street at 6:00.
Okay.
It's a very child family friendly event. We've got Phil Baker, we've got multiple organizations performing, 40 vendors plus, um, a car show and commercial products as well as, um, inflatables for the kids and the community.
All right.
Any concerns, Linda?
No.
If you're looking at.
I don't think so. Must approve.
Second.
With, okay.
With the.
Yeah, with the amendment.
With the 9:00, 9:00 p.m. amendment.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to address this or any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion's carried. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Thanks.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The vote, and motion's carried. Will be adjourned.
Do we have a note of life?
Well. Let's pledge to this flag and we'll pretend.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have someone from Word of Life here for invocation? You'd stand at the microphone. We get all kinds of complaints. People can't hear.
Well, it's pre. Good and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for the blessing of life and community. We ask of these who've gathered tonight that you would grant us wisdom as they make important decisions regarding our community. We ask for your continued blessing on our beautiful city, and we ask for all of this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Olson.
Who's that mean?
Olson.
I'm here, yeah.
Rice.
Here.
Tronis.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
Barrington. Allen. Smith.
Here.
Charks.
Here.
Uh, we have a quorum, uh, however, as you notice, uh, we do have a couple of, uh, council representatives that, uh, aren't able to make it tonight. Uh, Marty Barrington is in Rapid City. His daughter is participating in the state golf tournament, and he wanted to watch her play, and, uh, Dan Allen, uh, had a death in the family and, uh, also unable to attend tonight. Uh, first item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of the fo- uh, formal agenda items. Anything from the council that they wish to discuss or?
I, I just have a, uh, question, and it's just one out of curiosity, but do we have election workers set up already, or is this a hope and a prayer that we're actually going to find somebody to run the ballot?
We have election workers.
And how many do we need?
We have three for each of the different types of ballots. So it's the Ward 3 ballot, the outside city limits, and then the Wards 1, 2, and 4 ballot. So we have three for each, and then a master bookworker, and then we'll have a resolution board.
Could you just, for the sake of the people listening, tell us, uh, their qualifications, not individually, but just in general, what we look for and, and why we have three?
Actually, uh, Susan from the Davidson County Auditor's Office selected the election workers and selected ones that have worked in the past. She is helping organize the election between the school and the city.
The reason I ask, if people are interested in doing this, they, they talk to Susan then?
Yeah.
Because I've had some people who apparently have nothing to do on the first Tuesday of some months.
Yes. Back to Susan. Since she does most of the elections, we only, I think the last one the city did was in 2009. So about every six years, we have to run the election between us and the school district.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. On page 49, I don't know if it's page 40, your page 49 or if it's just 49. I guess it's, anyway, pay estimates. Um, I was looking at the payment for molar lumber. Is, are those numbers accurate?
What page are you?
It's 45.
Forty, yeah, okay. On, on the online, yes, it would be 45, sorry. Um, it says that the amount that we're paying is 288,408. Paid to date is only 311, and then the contract amount is 3,918, and I just wondered if we really have only paid 311,000 so far, I would imagine. Who would I ask?
But, but isn't the contract amount the whole project?
Well, but.
We're, we're certainly not paying molar lumber, 3.1.
No, but that, this would make.
But they would pay the subcontractors.
Yeah, that would imply. I just wondered if that could possibly be an accurate number, or if that was a typo, if we've actually paid 3,116.
The pay estimates come from the engineering office, so I don't have the background or the breakdown that comes with that.
Doesn't that page to date mean what he's been paid on the project?
Yeah, what, how much? So, so I'm thinking we're nearing the end of this project. We certainly have paid more than, more than, uh, just under 10% of the project. I just, I just.
Susan, I'm, I'm wondering if Public Works by mistake just did what we've paid year to date in that field instead of.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That would be my guess.
Okay.
That, I, I will double check on that.
Well.
But yeah, Public Works puts this together.
And the other one, uh, that I noticed on that was for Colo Concrete, uh, right underneath that, where the paid to date is $40,000 over the contract amount. Is there a reason, is that li- I just wondered if it was one of those cases where we didn't get work done last year, and so this year we're paying, and there was money from last year's budget? No answer. Okay, these, these are just some questions that I have.
My, my recollection of what Terry said is, is that would be the case, that they had some that they, they, uh, hadn't finished up because of the weather and they were finishing up.
Well, that's what I anticipated, but it just.
Well, the contract number is 2014.
Right, and paid to date is.
Well, I'll have to visit with Shane when they're back, and we'll follow up at the next meeting.
Do we not have anyone from Public Works here tonight?
Not, well, Shane and Terry aren't here.
That's a pretty significant question. You might want to defer that item to, like, we.
Both of them are pretty significant in my humble opinion, but.
Well, okay. We should, the information that you should know.
Yeah. I mean, I just think it's worth knowing, but I, it's not that I want to withhold any payments, but certainly if we owe 86,200, you know, the one we contract for 46,000 and we're paying 86,000, then that just raises a little.
Those are significant questions, and, uh, we don't have, unfortunately, an engineer person here, and I don't really answer.
I think there are good questions, and we will find an answer.
So do we want to pull those out? And, or do you want, do we approve the pay, do we still pay them?
If you give, give me just one second. I'm pulling up the detail for 2015 on the Corn Palace construction. That must be a typo on there.
That's all I could imagine was that.
Because it shows the total amount paid this year. Some of these are not to the corn, well, there's like about 630, 675 that's not to the contract, but otherwise we're at 1,470, 482, 68 for 2015, and for 2014 I've got 2.1, but there's also some other items in there that aren't. There's a building survey and a couple of things that aren't construction. So you're, you're clearly way beyond that 311, 642 paid to here to date. That's gotta be an error.
Yeah.
Well, I'm wondering if it's, it's 3 million possibly.
That's what I was wondering.
I bet you're.
I thought if they just left off one of their decimal point. I don't like, just moved it one.
Give me two seconds.
You should have an information for you, though.
Well, you hate to assume anything. You know what happens, right?
And I, I do think we need to get the answers to these questions. I guess the difficulty I would have in, in holding back on this, in terms of Colwell Concrete, you're only talking about $3,000, but, you know, if you're going to pull out those two items alone, that would be different, but I would hate to pull out the pay estimates, and then, you know, the other people get swept in.
That's a good point, because certainly we're not, I'm not contesting that we owe 288,000 to them. I just want to know if we, if we owe them more than that, so maybe we don't pull them out and we just get the answers.
I actually think you're closer to the 3,116, because the, the ones that wouldn't be included in there is, there's supplies in here and plant specs that wouldn't be part of that project. But yeah, you're way over the, the total out of that account is 3.6 million.
Okay. Well, let's, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with us going ahead and paying those estimates. I just, um, would be interested in knowing why the Colwell Contract, Concrete one is 40,000 more and.
If there's a, appears to be a SNAP due, the finance officer could certainly pull it, and I expect she would if she saw something irregular and bring it back. And, and, and the alternative, we'll have an answer.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'd move approval of the consent agenda items.
A motion and a second to, um, approve the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the, uh, audience or in public that wishes to make any comment regarding anything on the consent agenda? Now, we'll have a roll call vote.
Olson.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Tronis.
Aye.
Dosher.
Aye.
Barrington. Smith.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Citizens input, if you need to address the mayor, members of the council, uh, on an item that was not on the agenda, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. Council, have anything?
I do.
Okay.
I, um, had several conversations in the last few weeks with people that had questions that I thought I would, um, ask, and the first one, last, in our, at our last meeting, we approved a variance for a shed that the height was, uh.
More than the.
More than what the, the code was. So, um, it happened that the next day, and I know that, I looked back in the records and in the minutes, and I know that there were no complaints by any of the neighbors, and there were no, um, there was no response when the mailing went out, but, um, the na- one of, one of the people who lives in that area, um, wrote to me the next day and said, "Did you know that this has, this shed has been up for two months?" And that they were in pouring concrete inside the shed that day that we approved the variance. And she said, "You know, it's, it's difficult as neighbors to be the bad guy, because you want to stay on good terms, but why were they not required to meet the code when they were building the, the building, and why did we not know that the building had been built when we were talking about this?" Um, and I honestly didn't have a good answer for her. I said, "I had no idea." I mean, I think we operate under the assumption that we're, when we're approving a variance, that it is pre-construction, not post. So, um, I wondered if there was anyone that could address that for us?
Well, I, I guess I can't speak to this particular situation. Obviously, that individual would have had to buil- get a building permit, and, um, I, I don't know from, from that point whether our building inspector, uh, made any, uh, contact with them regarding, uh, the compliance with what was spelled out in the building permit. Um, I don't think that the planning commission was made aware of, of any of that.
I'm not sure what would happen. I mean, there's also two sheds out there. We made sure we're talking very long.
Well.
One, I don't know, I don't know if he's even come and get a permit. I don't know if it's downstairs, or I don't. No, if a permit was issued, he wouldn't have been able to issue a permit until the variance was approved. So that I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll have to ask. I'd have to check.
I just.
I'll check with John and see what the story is, so.
So, um, that was.
I don't know.
That was the first one. Stay, stay there just for. I don't know, I don't know that you're the person, but I'm going to put you in the hot seat since Terry isn't here tonight. Um, another question that was posed was with regard to the Pheasant Ridge Apartments that are on West 23rd Avenue. Um, and I don't, this may not even be your department, but I'll ask you, and you can, whoever can answer it, but, um, they were not required to put in sidewalks. And the person who brought this to my attention said, "I am a business owner, and when I built my establishment, I was required to put in eight-foot commercial, you know, sidewalks for a commercial setting, and in that particular location, those sidewalks would have been very nice because they would have been a nice extension of the bike paths right where that is." And, um, I drove by there, and I'm like, "You're right. We, there are no sidewalks." We didn't, and here we are, like, enforcing our sidewalk, um, ordinance, and low and behold, there are no sidewalks by the Pheasant Ridge Apartments, so.
I'll, I'll bring it to Terry's, no, I, I'm not.
It's not you. I actually knew it wasn't you, but you're standing there.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll give it to Terry's.
You're a good listener, guys.
Yeah, I'll give it to Terry's.
That's a, that's a requirement to put sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't know what the situation is, or if it's on the agenda, or what's the deal. If I can't answer.
So, yeah.
Now, what direction are you talking? Are you talking to the north of Pheasant?
To the north? Well, yeah, the, the, you know, they're on right parallel.
Because one of the, uh, our code specifically states it's on curb and gutter.
Right.
And there is not curb and gutter out there.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, there are.
There's, there's a bike path that's, uh, more of a nature path than, it's kind of gravel, uh, but as far as the sidewalk, it specifically states that it's, that, that is the curb and gutter, and I'm wondering if that might be the reason.
Yeah, it could be, but I can say.
But they have, yeah, and they have curb and gutter going into their driveway that goes in there, but maybe because it's not along the road, is that the reason?
I would think that would be, careful with that. Put curb and gutter on both sides, both sides will have to pay.
There's just a gravel path that kind of goes beyond.
Susan. Yeah, be careful. If they, if they, if they do go out, put curb and gutter in, that's mixed, and sidewalks have to go on both sides. And you're talking 23rd, yes. We're on Pheasant Road, and when they're, they're doing that road right now, I'm wondering is.
That could be.
If there's the possibility that, that there should be sidewalks, and again, it, they will be.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you, are you talking the north side or the?
I'm, I, I actually was talking about along West 23rd, but, um, but you're right. I mean, that, I, it's, it was, I'm just relaying, I'm, I am just a voice tonight for some questions that were mentioned. What's that? No, there's a bike path that starts basically at that, where that church is, where the apostle church is. That's where the bike.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say the 23rd, uh, there would be no way to enforce that because of no curb and gutter, but Pheasant, that new road that is going in right now that's running north and south, that's probably a question we need to follow up on.
Okay.
Because it would probably connect to that bike path.
Okay, okay.
Uh, dismiss. I'm sorry. I have, I have a few more questions. Thank you.
I'll follow up with the building inspector on that one, but I don't know what the, I, I can't answer that one, so I'll find out.
So, um, so the next question that I had came from people who had been in attendance at graduation about the speakers, and how, and, and they emphasized, "It's not that we need new speakers at the Corn Palace, but someone needs to figure out which one of those speakers is not working or is making it so it's so impossible." They said, "I wasn't there, so, but you can probably speak to it."
Yeah, it was very difficult to hear depending on where the speaker positioned themselves in front of the microphone. Um, so, uh, Dr. Graves, when he introduced people, you could hear him. When Noah Thompson talked, you could hear him. When Joe Childs read names, you could not hear any of the names in the raised seats. Um, when Aaron Crumbls talked and spoke, uh, maybe half of his speech was amplified, um, and when he would move close enough to the microphone, you could hear him great, but I don't know if there's what the, how the amplification was set up, or if there was anybody running sound mixing or anything else, but, um, I had lots of people tal- tell me that it was very difficult to hear.
We discussed this morning at the department head meeting.
Even yesterday when I talked to Dan.
Without naming names.
I think that was the first complaint we've heard on speaker system this year. Actually, it was set up, they did a sound, and, um, both of Mitchell's music instructors, they adjusted it. For some reason, one of them turned the sound.
For some reason, one of them turned the sound down on the PA where the person was, 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 was the main box, not the ones on, by the pianos. Don't know why they turned it down. Afterwards, we were looking what was the problem. There is some issues. We've changed some problems. We get, there's a couple of dead spots. We've priced out speakers. The box is, how would you want to say it, not locked up. Everybody that comes, everybody turns knobs. And yeah, there's a knob, a volume control knob where you can turn it, but even though you turn the volume, that was turned down 70% after it was set at 100% an hour before the concert. Don't know why they turned it down. And when I was standing there, I talked to Ryan Staley and he said, "No, it's good. It's good." Jeff, Jeff went and turned it up and then he told me about it. And if he does that, he'll get humming while they're, while they're going. It was still going on. But Chris moved it. Don't know why. That was yesterday. Circus, bad. Don't know why. Midstates has got some bids in. It's not a cheap fix.
Have you looked to see if there, if everything is
Midstates came out, reset everything.
And all the speakers are connected?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
We do have two dead spots, the, the southeast corner, northeast corner of the end zone bleachers. They're, they're, they priced out already two speakers to cover that for next year's sporting events. The PA, I don't know, I don't, 3,000 bucks to roughly, that's approximately, to buy the locked up box to, we're hoping to get a box and everything will lock up. The only thing they can touch is the volume. They came out, reset it all, but the first event you have, all the knobs, you've seen them basketball games, they're all sticking out. Everybody turns every one. I don't know much about it. Yeah, it's not good. It's our number one complaint every time there's an event for 20 years. Will it be a Band-Aid? I don't know. The speakers, you know.
So there's not a way to lock that, that area? I guess you've got people that are going
It's, it's a portable box. If you see like at, like at the head table, it's by three feet tall. Won't even fit underneath a bench. The next one would fit under with, with the box. Then on the, like now it's on that stage, south end of the stage, right where the, south side of the, where the bleachers would be. And then part of our, we, we put in a $22,500 TriCaster, $1,000 computer, $1,500 guts to go in the computer. This is just since January 15th. Some of that was, most of that was scoreboards, which also the TriCaster with this. He said there's a lot of old parts up there that can be replaced. That's 15,000. But Jeff said a lot of the stuff in that has already been replaced. Amplifiers.
Do we have vacuum tubes?
I think after all the complaints, maybe we could, I could get a bid on a complete new one, so you know where you're at. And I already got the bids on fixing it, but gotta have it in the budget. I got that in my office already. I don't know, I don't know the answer. Midstates, everybody tells me is the best in the business on commercial buildings. They do them all, so. Anything else?
Thank you.
I just have one more thing. Sorry. I'm so glad that Mark walked in. Mark, are you still the Lake Advisory Committee person? Do you want to talk about the lake? Do you have a minute? Okay. I had, was asked also about the project that was discussed a year ago with the docs. And there are, we apparently have people in our community who are eager to see that come to fruition and wondered if there was any progress on that.
Sure. My name's Mark Pitts. I guess I'm kind of in between being the chair and
Co-chair.
Co-chair.
Assistant chair. That's right.
Exactly. Fast chair, yeah. Probably sticking around to help out the, the new chair, but
Who is the new chair?
That will be Mike Blalot.
Okay.
We're happy to have him along. He's a biologist for the Pheasants Forever group. So as far as your two questions, the doc program, we have not done absolutely any, I mean, we haven't done anything on that at this point in time because we're still waiting on an answer on liability, on whether it would be a liability issue to have public doc slips or something of that nature. And we just haven't heard. So we just kind of said, "We'll wait till we hear." The, your second question of some of this, what we're doing and working on. We had a nice conversation with a South Dakota State University professor who does studies on lake habitat and fish studies on how to grow, well, trophy-sized bass, to be specific. They came in and gave a nice presentation on what they're doing from a study perspective down in, I believe it's Texas, do you recall?
Yeah.
For some private lake owners who thought they were doing quite a bit for habitat at the time, mostly natural-based habitat. When they actually went in, drained the lake, looked at what they had, they found basically nothing. And what was happening was the habitat was, was biodegrading, in essence, faster than they anticipated. And it's just hard to know what you have down the bottom of your lake until you drain it. But they went in and did some work with a company that produces what's called Fish Cities. And essentially what they are is a habitat-based program of about 20 different habitat structures, inorganic, plastic-type or plastic-based type structures. But they're coated with a particular, I'm not sure what the coating is, but it allows for algae growth in essence for small fish to come and eat on. And that attracts larger fish to prey on those smaller fish. And, and these habitat structures will start out from the very shallow waters and make their way into the deeper waters, in essence. And so in that lake, they, that was about a 120-acre lake. They had 22 of those Fish Cities. They were about $5,000 each. I think they're an interesting idea. We would like to look into them more. And, and that was part of our conversation into the budget for the Lake Committee. But with that, he also, I, I kind of brought up the fact that isn't this, you know, it's great to have habitat and things, but ultimately, you know, we've got other issues with our lake. And we've looked at doing some drainage study, or we've done drainage studies to draw down the lake at certain time periods. And, and we also know we've got a nutrient load issue coming from the west side or west-north end of the lake from Firestone Creek. And so then the discussion rolled into draining of the lake, which I'm sure people have seen and, and heard much about. We asked these folks who study this for their work to basically give us what their recommendation might be, just kind of off the cuff. And that was, well, ultimately to solve your greater issue would be to drain the lake, re-cut low areas, high areas for different types of fish, get the proper, remove the nutrients and things of that nature that are currently in the lake, the extra sediment, build a larger, or a secondary, I shouldn't say larger, but a secondary lake above Lake Mitchell for, you know, sediment and nutrients to drop out. And then the rest of the water, cleaner water can run into Lake Mitchell. And they were, these were just kind of ideas that were, that were being put forth and, and they were great. We would like to study them further. You know, we kind of off the cuff said, "Well, do you have an idea what, you know, that might cost?" And they just threw out the millions of dollars based on basically very little information. So we're actually, part of what we're requesting in this coming year's budget is to do a study, if we can get the information quickly enough from the South Dakota State University professors, on what their costs would be to do a study of that nature. We want to look at the costs, the economic impact, both negative and positive for it. We want to see, okay, if we do all this, are we just delaying the inevitable that it will become an issue again because we're not taking care of the upstream issues? With our reservoir being 80 to 100 years old, we're not the only reservoir in the state that's going to have, or is having these issues and may have potential need for this in the future. Can we take these numbers on a per acre basis and apply them to other reservoirs in the lake? And think about it from a governmental perspective and say, "All right, are we spending this money in the right way if this is a decision that's made to go forth? Or would we be better off looking upstream and saying, 'How do we really approach the real issue?'" And, and we've tried working on that over the last four, five years. And I know the previous groups have worked on it before that. And it's just a very tough nut to crack. You're working with private landowners and, and I can respect this completely. They want to be able to do what they want to do on, on their own property. And they're all, a lot of them are in businesses and so on and so forth. And I have my personal opinions on, on some of that. But at the same time, I think this whole study will be beneficial, not only for the city of Mitchell, our surrounding areas, but potentially the state as well to say, "Okay. I know we have an agricultural-based economy, but are there some limits here that we need to look at in order to protect everyone's drinking water, in order to protect the public's recreational areas?" Or, well, my, my business is a construction company. We do construction. It'd be really cheap to throw my garbage on my neighbor's property wherever I go. I can't do that. It's not right. It's not ethical. However, somebody else might have a different opinion. So hopefully, we are getting to the overall larger question of maybe how can we prevent some of the nutrient loading occurring in our lakes? That's what we're working on.
Great. Thank you for that. I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I appreciate you.
Anyone else have anything? Anyone from the audience? Please step forward.
Yeah, in regards to the water drainage, I know the soccer
Would you state your name, please?
Oh, my name is Alex Fancet. I'm an intern at Mitchell Institute in Meion. And I work for the city as well. And from what I've been told, the soccer complex, the sprinklers, the water comes from the lake. So that might be another issue that you guys might have to be aware of.
We've got, we've got several of those cases. There's the port out north of Mitchell gets water from the lake. There's a lot of them. And that's why they need to look at it both, you know, the economic feasibility and, and those things would be taken into consideration.
Okay, cool. I was just making sure people would be aware of that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Not, we will move on to the next item. Update from the city administrator.
I do have a couple of things to report. I know we started scheduling this agenda item back, I believe in September of last year as a way for me to update the council on any items that came up between when the agenda is finalized, which is typically Wednesday, and the meeting on Monday. This week, we did not have Corn Palace change orders for the first time in several months. So I thought maybe I could go through a couple of things. That's probably one of the most frequent questions I get asked is, or at least in the past week, is where we are with the domes. I can tell you that they are still completing the calculations. I would not expect us to see anything, have an answer probably for another week to two weeks. One of the questions that I've been asked by the public is whether the city actually required them to look at snow and wind loads ahead of time because some people were misunderstanding the way the news article was written. The city did require those load testing, that load testing to be done as part of the specs. And the process that we're in now is just ensuring that the design of the domes and the way that they've actually been constructed in comparison to the computer modeling are going to meet the standards that are already set in the bid specs. So it's not that the city didn't consider wind and snow loads. It's just that we need to ensure that the end product is meeting the specifications that were stated in the original bid specs. That for some reason is maybe a little bit of a misunderstanding in the public. So I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. Making sure here, it doesn't, it appears as though the floor should be done beginning of June. Looks like the sign might not be in till mid-July, waiting on product to come for the backing. Like I said, domes, we should have an answer within the next couple of weeks when all the calculations are finished. We do have the big corn mural that we've had quite a bit of discussion here at the council meeting. That is going in, I believe, this week. Yep. Okay. So estimating about a week and a week to a week and a half for that to get put up. And it'll be similar to what you've seen with the Corn Palaces that are already up. We do have the Oscar Howe artwork is getting reframed, so that's getting done currently. We're finishing the proofing on the timelines. They've got some of the lights already installed. The remainder of the lights are holding off until the prep work is done on the entrance to the Corn Palace, as well as the second floor, because it creates a lot of dust when they're doing that initial prep work. And the sign is coming down. They were going to do it today, but the weather, obviously with the wind, got that delayed just slightly.
Stephanie, can I ask a question?
Sure.
If the dome spec, the load and the wind, the shear, all that was part of the original contract, what's taking them so long to figure out if it works or not?
Well, you know, as best as I can tell, I think it's one thing when they do computer modeling and they put the things in the computer before they actually design it. But then after they come out, they actually have the product and they have to make sure it's going to do what it says it's going to do when you actually get the product in place. But I can't speak for that. I'm not an engineer. All I know is that the city is being maybe a little bit conservative on that, that we don't want those domes to be installed until we have verification from both their engineering firm and ours that they're going to do what they say they're supposed to do.
I absolutely agree with that point. My concern is, you know, taking an Asbilt the size of these domes, then trying to figure out if they're good or not, probably not a good, good process. And I'm putting the blame back on the architects and the people who built the dome. This just seems, because this has been going on now for a month, they're trying to figure out, will it work? Will it not work?
And part of that, I, in my opinion, seemed like it was almost like a communication gap in between us as the owner requesting them to get us the calculations and then we were waiting for a significant period of time to get those calculations back from Minnesota McGrath. They have an engineering firm in Minnesota that has the engineering stand for South Dakota too that reviews it. And then they send it here. And then TSP, who is working with our architectural firm, does a secondary review. Well, now what they're in the process of now is there's a little bit of, maybe just questions or discrepancies. I don't know how you'd characterize them, that they're sorting those out to make sure both engineers agree to what the results are. I, I don't know if that's a typical process that it's taking this long, but it, along with a lot of things with the Corn Palace, it just seems like the communication maybe lags a bit when you're working with all these other firms. So I don't know. Ken, if you had, or mayor, if you had anything else to add?
No, and I, I think you've phrased it accurately.
Okay.
To, well, you know, we've talked this before. We have been extremely frustrated in the, in the process. And we have, and I think that from the, from the beginning, Mueller Lumber has been on top of this project and has tried as best they can to get the architects and the engineers and all of the subcontractors on the same page and to keep this project moving. It's been a, as I said, a frustrating endeavor to try to achieve that. But I'm not going to place the blame on Mueller Lumber for having, they've tried their very hardest to get this and keep this project on track. This is just another example of, of the delays that have been caused in, in the process. And we have conveyed to Mueller, and Mueller has in turn conveyed these concerns to the architect and to the others. And we're, I guess, doing the best that we can from, from this end to try to, to move it along. And we are as anxious as you and everyone at Mitchell to get these domes installed. And we think that we are getting closer. But until, until we as the owner are completely satisfied that all of the specifications have been met, we're not going to allow that those domes be installed until we're be installed until we're satisfied that they meet all of the specifications and are going to be able to withstand the wind load and the snow and whatever issues that might arise in the future. So we, we just hope that this is accomplished within the next week or two.
You know, and as Stephanie said, we had a rather long meeting, and I forget who was on the council then. I mean, it seems like a really long time ago we got started with this. But we had a very long meeting, and several of my colleagues asked, you know, well, what about snow? What about buildup? What about ice? You know, will the lights break? And all that kind of thing. And it was almost, you know, a poo-poo. We're a Minnesota firm. We have harsh winters too, and we know all about this, and you know, it's, you're worrying over nothing. And so all those questions were asked, and there were all those assurances, and then, you know, you get these domes, and I think they look cool, but they blow a little bit more than I would like to see on the ground. Makes me wonder what they'll look like up on top. So I think the extra delay to make sure we don't have flying knives or, you know, ellipticals instead of domes, or whatever shape they might turn into in the wind is the prudent thing to do.
And-
Definitely not putting the blame on Mueller. I don't think that's the greatest of the deal. It all goes back to Minneapolis in my mind.
Yep.
But it's also, you know, I work for a technology company. I know you can engineer things. I had, I had a time and very quickly, if, if there's an incentive to do so. This seems like it's, and it's not here. It's in Minneapolis. So I don't know what, what the incentive issue is to get them moving, but we all, citizens ought to know, are we going to have domes for the summer or not?
Have we paid for them?
I believe when Dave and I talked about it, I think we're at sixty percent that they've been paid for. And I agree with you, Dave, and I think that that, I meant Dave from Muller Lumber. Mr. Tronis, I think the reason why I wanted to bring it up now is because one of the questions I keep getting is why didn't the city think about the specifications ahead of time? And we did, and it's included in the specifications. And secondly, just so the public knows, the reason for the delay is just making sure that everything's covered the way it needs to be covered. So, yep, we could have taken their word for it and put them up there, but I don't think that's in our best interest either, so.
And I think that some modifications have been made, and now we're waiting for the approval from the engineers that this, in fact, is going to solve or remedy any issues that we brought. You know, when, when they were delivered to us in twenty-some crates and then they were assembled here, it was not until after they had been assembled, we're sitting on Main Street, and we had one of our typical forty mile an hour winds, that we noticed the movement of all of these. And, and to their credit, Muller came to us and said, I'm not satisfied. And, and so we stopped the installation of, they, they would have put them up on the corn palace in that condition had we not stopped and, and said, we're not satisfied with the condition that they're in, and we are asking that you go back to the drawing board, and so that's kind of where we're at right now.
The other item that, is there any other questions on the corn palace?
Are the turrets here?
They are not here yet. My understanding, my understanding is they're going to come and bring them at the same time they do the crane to lift everything up at once, just because we don't have a lot of storage area, secured storage for them. So my understanding is they are painted, the powder coated painting is done, and they're done. They just need to bring them here at the same time they're going to do the installation of the domes and turrets all at once. Any other corn palace questions? Is that enough for one night? Okay. The other one that I had a question, I think it was maybe Councilor Dolshur this morning, I, I think it was you, but asked about West End Bridge? Somebody had asked about an update on West End Bridge. Okay. I did send a message to Terry and Shane, and they said they did, they do have the deck poured. It was done several weeks ago. They still believe that they're on schedule to have the bridge open for the Fourth of July. So that seems to be on track. And that's the only things that I have to update you on.
Is West Street conserved or not?
That one I don't-
As far as I know, yes, it is.
And then just for Councilor Olson's information, I spoke at a tenth grade English class. The topic, it was four of them. The topic was making a change in your New York community. We were talking about how city councils function, and I told them all to talk to the city counselor at the high school for more information. So-
And a few have.
Okay. That's all I have.
A committee report, traffic?
Traffic commission met tonight at seven twenty PM with four items on the agenda. The first was a request by Milton Nelson to paint the curbs yellow for one foot at driveway cutouts near several commercial businesses in town. This was tabled until we could actually identify what businesses he's requesting. Next was the Heart and Soul Cancer Walk. Run Board of Directors requested that the city of Mitchell close Eighth Street from Minnesota Street to Iowa Street, and Cadwell entrance to Eighth Street on Friday, June nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, from five PM to nine PM for the cancer walk run event. This was approved. Next, the Tour de Corn Committee requested to block off a portion of the city hall parking lot in the adjacent street in the one hundred block of East Seventh on August twenty-second, set from seven AM to nine thirty AM for registration, and also requested a police escort and traffic control at Twenty-third Street and Main at nine thirty AM the same day. This was also approved. And the Summer Solstice Committee requested to close Main Street from First to Third at four PM on June nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, and then close Third to Seventh Street on Main at seven AM on June twentieth, two thousand fifteen, to be reopened at nine PM on June twentieth, two thousand fifteen, and this was also approved. That's all we had.
Entertained a motion to approve the committee report.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the committee report. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Entertained a motion for the city council to recess and sit as the board of adjustment.
Second.
Motion second to sit on board of adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Set the date, entertain a motion to set the date of June first, two thousand fifteen for the board of adjustment hearing as listed below.
Move to set the date. Second.
Have a motion and a second to set the date of June first, two thousand fifteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Hearing on the application of Tia Shippey as the applicant and Lisa Shippey, the owner, for a conditional use permit to operate a family daycare center located at eight oh eight East Twelfth Avenue, legally described as the west fifty-five feet of Lot sixteen and east thirty-five feet of Lot seventeen, Block Two, North Ridge subdivision, City of Mitchell.
I could direct your attention to the planning commission meeting, or minutes. You would see that the planning commission did hold a hearing at their last regular meeting and did recommend approval with three conditions. One, that it's not be transferable. Two, that if she, the operation ceases for a period of six months, and to pacify her inspection. And I was told that today that she has passed that, so.
Move to approve with the conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the application. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Entertained a motion for the board of adjustment to adjourn and the city council to reconvene in regular session.
Second.
Motion second to reconvene in regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Action to approve on the application of Mitchell Main Street and beyond for a special event permit located on Main Street for June twentieth, two thousand fifteen, for the summer solstice. Move to approve. Motion second to approve the application. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Action from Robert Ball of H&R Salvage for landfill charges. Is Mr. Ball here? You have in your packets and distributed some information that he has provided as well as a container, and I will have him explain what those are.
Robert, my name's Robert Ball. I own H&R Salvage. As you look through your deal here, you'll see where I had, this process went on for a period of October. I actually tested the soil before I purchased it in October of two thousand and thirteen. That's when the initial plan came into effect, when we initially started to see what we was dealing with before we even purchased the place. And as you scroll through it, Geotech was involved, the DNR here in South Dakota, Jeff Bafki was in, owned in it, Kim McIntosh, you know, anyone that had anything to do with anything at all with the soil that was on that property. We drilled, you can look in your thing here, they, we went to the worst, what they thought was the worst areas, and you see a little excavator in there digging a hole. Well, that's from a company called Geotech. They put water wells in it. There's soil samples and water samples right there. That ground where it's showing it done, that's the piece where the dirt's coming from that's in question.
Which one is that?
This, it's on, I should add, mark these pages. It shows, yeah, it shows excavation for Geotech right here. Above it on the top of the page, it says west side of the Mosley Shear before the cleanup. That is the thing that's in question right there.
So that's what it was before, and this is what it was after the cleanup?
No.
Is that right?
No, no, that's what it was before. This is what it is when we moved enough material to get in there to put, there's a well there now. And I have the water sample results from that, which Mr. Bafki has, and so does Kim. They just came back. There was no contaminants in the water. If you flip it over two more pages, you'll see a big gray clear area. That's what it looks like now. The bottom one of that says scrap pile has been reduced to nothing. The one above it's what it looked like before. The one below it's what it looks like now. I'm not coming here looking for a handout from you. That's not how it is. I put this together over a period of a long time. I've got a hundred thousand dollars in this study already of my own money.
I, yeah, I've got a couple of questions if, if I may. First of all, I, I just want to say thanks for whatever prompted you to purchase this and that required it to be cleaned up, because I've dealt with hazardous waste cleanups before, and I know how difficult they are and how long they take. The questions, the information, to me, it seems pretty straightforward. One, it's not hazardous material, and that's been determined through Geotech and other entities that the city looked at, and so it doesn't have to be treated as a hazardous waste disposal facility, of which there aren't any in South Dakota, and probably would have to be shipped to either Wisconsin or Illinois or wherever the nearest facility is. The thing that I see in question is, you would like it to be treated as petroleum contaminated soil that could then be used in what I call topsoil farming or just be used as top cover, and the city is saying, and so is the state, and from Bonnie Calamine in the email, that contaminated soil cannot be treated as petroleum contaminated soil. It would have to be disposed of as municipal solid waste in the landfill. My question, and maybe to Ron Olson, is what is the tipping fee difference between municipal solid waste and petroleum contaminated soil? Municipal solid waste is thirty-nine dollars per ton, but what's the charge for PCS?
I believe you were catching me off guard. I believe we're, we're at seven fifty. We're one of the cheapest ones in the state.
And that, so to me, this seems more, it's, it's an economic question and not a hazardous material question or a disposal question. If the city, and the, the comparison in here also, the city of Mitchell at thirty-nine dollars per municipal solid waste as per ton compared to eleven dollars in Sioux Falls, et cetera, I can understand, then I would want it treated.
But you're, you're quoting the price of Sioux Falls for their petroleum contaminated soil.
Oh, that's for their petroleum contaminated as eleven dollars? What is their municipal solid waste tipping fee in Sioux Falls?
That's their disposal cost, where everything's right in that jar.
No, 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 no. The, the question that, of what is in the jar is non-hazardous material. That, that's all that all this information is telling me. It's not telling me whether it can be treated as petroleum contaminated soil or municipal solid waste. The state, Bonnie Calamine, has told us, in her opinion, that the contaminated soil cannot be treated as petroleum contaminated soil. So therefore, it can't be land farmed and used as topsoil. It has to be disposed inside, buried, et cetera. Okay? I want to know what the comparison of tipping fee is for municipal solid in Sioux Falls versus us. You're telling me municipal, or petroleum contaminated in Sioux Falls is eleven dollars, and ours is, ours is seven fifty?
Correct.
Okay.
And Sioux Falls, the MSW rate is in the, is around thirty five.
Around thirty, yeah. I thought everybody was close to the thirty dollar range.
We're, we're one of the lower priced ones, actually. Most, most other landfills now are above the price of Mitchell at thirty-nine dollars.
Okay. And so then my question becomes, how many, how many tons are we talking that you have So that, and that, it was a big cleanup.
The jar is very important to you.
Oh, they're, they're important to me. I've, I've done, I've done-
Each one of them landfills, every one of them, and their paper is right here. I can truck this stuff down there, tilt the thing over, dump it for seven to eleven dollars in another county.
Only, only if, only if they'll take it as petroleum contaminated soil.
Whatever, however they want to call it, I don't care. Geotech sent it right to them. They come back with a reply. You got right in your book.
Yeah.
It gives an estimated cost from every landfill but our own.
Only as petroleum contaminated soil.
Was created. It wasn't created there. They're willing to take it at a third of the cost in another county that won't dispose of it right here in our own county, in which it should have been dealt with for years ago, a thousand years. I mean, the thing's set there forever. You know, and maybe I should have been like the rest of them, dug a hole and buried it. I mean, when you read through this-
I, I've, I read the whole thing.
When you read through it, it, every indication I got, when it led to this point, cleanup till the time when I contacted him weeks in advance that it's coming, that we were disposing of this stuff at the petroleum-based fee. If it would have said clean back then, it was going to be forty dollars a ton, I would adjust myself accordingly. I've got three quarters of a million dollar building sitting on the ground right now. Two go up, twenty employees, two employee, and this is a half a million dollar setback. So you tell me what your answer is. That's plain and simple.
So I don't under, maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but I don't understand why, why it meets their criteria, but it doesn't meet ours.
You both have a sub-D, sub-D landfill. I don't understand it either. The bottom line of it is, you want, they want to roll it over and put it in the hole and bury it. I've got water samples that sits above the ground right now. It doesn't contaminate the ground. Why do we got to bury it at, at such an urgency? It's set there for sixty-some years, and I can tell you, at a half a million dollars, it'll sit out there another sixty years.
Does the council understand the difference between contaminated and milled?
Um, I, I would, I would go on to say this about the operation.
Can you come closer to the microphone?
Excuse me. We are presently filling in the new cell that we built last year. We're in the very bottom. Okay, any, we're, we're right down next to the drainage layer that captures all of the leachate that comes off of this material. So I posed a question to our consultant. I said, I said, how should I handle this in the fill? I said, I'm down as low as I possibly can. He said, no. He said, get us up, move us up as high as you can in the fill, mix it with the garbage, and cover it at the end of the day. He doesn't want any of this, any of the arsenic, the lead, the PCBs moving off into our leachate collection system, which, I remind you, goes to the wastewater treatment facility, which eventually gets discharged to the Jim River. So I think it's prudent that we follow what our consultants say, and, and in my mind, once I mix it with garbage and I'm required to cover it, it's an MSW. Now, with that said, you know, we, we have our rates set in ordinance for MSW, and I guess it's up to the council if you want to charge a different rate for this material.
Ron, I understand what you're, what you're saying. But if I could, please. I understand what you're saying, but this gentleman is indicating that if he has to pay thirty-nine dollars, you know, a ton, that it's just going to sit above the ground. That's worse, isn't it? And dispose it?
I am-
I am, you know, I guess that's a decision that you, you folks have to make, I mean, like he said, it hasn't moved in sixty years, I, I'm trying to follow the ordinance for, for MSW, you understand?
Right.
And I'm trying to run.
But, but I'm, I'm not asking about money now.
Okay.
Okay. What, whatever we would charge, in your professional opinion, is it better to have it in the landfill and mixed up and taken care of, or is it better to just leave it where it is? Because if it's better to leave it where it is, we're done talking, and if it's better to bury it, then maybe we need to find some middle ground.
I'm not sure what the DNR is, we don't have a regulation over for, for him whether or not he can leave it there, I guess that's up to the DNR. I can't, I don't really have the authority to make a call on that, I guess, you know.
Ron, you bring up the D and R, and probably Robert checked this out too, is, is there programs now in place to help with contaminated soil, or are you pretty much on your own now? There used to be kind of a program that would help defray some of the costs.
For petroleum soils, there are.
But no other contaminants?
Not that I'm aware of.
You're not aware of any either?
And my theory is, okay, say you acquire a piece of property in Mitchell and it has that problem, why would you want to waste your time on me when you may need that? You know, I'm not asking you for, I don't need a government funding for it, plain and simple. If it would have been allocated in this book, the way my lawyer, the way Geotech, the way the DNR pronounced it to me, I'd have paid you your forty-nine dollars and I wouldn't be standing here. But I didn't budget it in, just like you don't budget it in, and somebody has to pay for it. So the bottom line is, do we want to leave it set there? You know, let it runoff like it's ran off, or would we rather just put it in a landfill and get it done, put it behind us and move on?
I, I have one very simple question, and that would be, do you want this body to consider what you are requesting to deposit in our landfill to be considered at the petroleum contaminated price? Or are you asking for some reduction in the MSW rate of thirty-nine dollars?
I'm asking for a reduction of however you classify it, so I can haul it here.
Well, I think it's been documented, and I, I don't know if you agree, that it is not classified as petroleum contaminated soil. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, and, and Ron's eyes, yes, yeah.
Well, is it in yours as well?
In mine? No.
Do you agree with the so-called experts' opinion?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I do. It has a combination of petroleum antifreeze and other contaminants too. You know, as you look in your jar, it's not clean dirt, but you can load it and haul it eighty miles an hour and it's not going to blow out, it's not garbage, you know, it has no chance for runoff and contaminating anything else. But as far as his mixing program, I know nothing about that, that's why I spent a hundred thousand dollars to get to this point.
Okay.
Now I got a huge hole, if you scroll back to the, it's dug up, it's ready to deliver. We were delivering it until this problem occurred. So now I'm sitting there with this, you know, and, you know, I, I can dig it off and put it in a huge pile, just leave it, go on and work around it, you know? The DNR doesn't give me a requirement to move it at any certain time.
Okay.
It's there, she says she wants to work with us, come to you first, see what you can determine. You know, if I can't, I'm sure you will be with her, I'm sure of that.
So, Robert, and Ken's question then, do you have a figure in your mind that would be fair?
Well, when I, when I set out for it, I, I set out with the intentions of seven and a half dollars a ton. All of us know, you, you put in a buffer for everything you do, figuring something can go south. I didn't put in a thirty-nine dollar, or a thirty-two dollar buffer, I just didn't, you know? If, if I could get it there at eleven to fifteen dollars, that's twice your cost, you know, I would be, I would be willing to, to do that and, you know, and hoping that it would work for you, you know? I would just as soon dispose of it, be done with it, move on with this thing, I'd like to make that a you pull it, is what I'd like to do with it and finish, continue cleaning it up, you know, it's came a long ways already, and it's been a, you know, you all know, it's sat there for many years, now you come into that end of town, it looks a lot better, it's just, you know, better for the city as a whole, you know?
Ron?
Yeah.
Can I ask you another question? So I don't, I'm not going to even pretend to understand how the landfill works, but you indicated that you, right now, where you would put this is at a low level, which is near the, the leach, leach system, whatever, I'm going to pretend like I know what all that means. Does, is that like permanently where that is, if, over time, I mean, does that level rise, or tell me how that, how that works, I mean?
If, if you think of, you think of a landfill as a coffee, coffee percolator.
Okay.
Any moisture that comes down through it is going to work its way down through the coffee, or through the garbage, and take it down to the bottom and where it will drip out. The leachate is that fluid or that liquid that comes out of it. Along its way, it picks up the contaminants from the garbage. What our consultant is saying is, you need to move your operation up out of where you're presently at and incorporate it into your garbage and keep it up high. The contaminants that's within this material that you like to cling on to things, they like to hold on to things, so it doesn't move readily through, through the solid waste or through anything else, so it, it will stay put, so I just have to move it up out of the operation. But the point that hopefully you understand, when we have priced and set our tipping fees, we are selling this cubic box of air. That's what the landfill sells, and whether it's dirt or garbage or anything else, it takes up that cubic foot of air. So our, and our rates are based upon, petroleum contaminated soil, in our regulations, we are required to cover the garbage with an earthen cover at least once a week, okay? We spray an application of, of a liquid cover onto it other days of the week. So petroleum contaminated soil, I can farm and I can use that as that once a week cover.
Can you describe farming?
Farming it, basically keeping it tore up so, so the, the fuels would volatilize and evaporate. And so when I put in that petroleum contaminated soil, when we bring that into landfill, it is soil that I have to put on once a week anyway. This is not, I have to put it in that cubic foot of airspace. I have to bury it and now I have to cover it at the end of the day, not at the end of the week, at the end of the day with an earthen cover.
Do you have any idea why these other communities are willing to take it for the cost of the petroleum?
I don't.
And Ron, obviously you don't have the, the information, everything that Geotech had, but you've got, you've got, okay, but you've got, but you've got, my question is, is how they, you know, they're, they're a very well-respected company in, in South Dakota, in fact, I don't know if there's another company that does exactly what they do, and they're coming with, with their, came to their recommendations or, or their conclusions, and then we got DNR that have come to the, a separate conclusion, and, you know, I don't expect you to, to talk on behalf of Geotech, but do you know where the confusion would lie?
Geotech's, Geotech's recommendation says it can be disposed of at Mitchell's landfill.
But not as petroleum-based material?
I didn't see that in your report.
I didn't see where it classified it as either type.
Nope.
Okay, so that, where that's coming from is the other landfills are saying that they would be willing to take it, that's, that's where that conclusion must be coming from, is that right, Robert?
Yeah, there's a, there's a study in there that came right from Geotech, it lists the other landfill, they sent it to, it should be right there in your book. Give you the cost.
Ron, if we weren't arguing about the thirty-nine dollars, would be, there'd be a place to take it in the landfill?
Yes, yeah, we can, we can take it in the landfill, I, I just have to move my operation up to a higher point in the landfill and.
So that it's at a higher elevation?
And that's what I've asked Bob, you know, give us notice, because I will be moving, I have to move our portable fences up and stuff and, and make a different area of landfill active before he brings it.
And how many tons are we talking about?
Thousand tons.
How many cubic, how many loads is that? Yeah, that's a good one.
One point six cubic yards in that time of district, did you reveal?
One point six cubic yards.
I think his first loading ride in was close to twenty ton, nineteen ton.
Oh, you mean how much load the load weighs?
So he's.
The number of truffles.
Fifty.
How many rooms is size, is it going to fill up?
This, probably I would say six.
Well, I was going to say that our protocol, because our, our discharge is up at the Jim River, and our protocol to protect our ability to have our leachate treated in the, in the sewage treatment plant, so it can go to the Jim River, and if we fail there, we get cut off at the Jim River.
Yeah.
That's our true protection, that's what we protect, is our ability to get rid of our final disposal of treated water at the Jim River, and of course, anything that goes into our sewage treatment plant is, is a concern, I do believe, on behalf of Ron and, and, I don't know, I used to talk with him about this stuff for hours, but ultimately, we need to discharge the Jim River and that will be protected. But we do have the ability to contract.
Nobody's disputing that, or, or anybody's looking at that, that point, and when he gets to that part, that's why they're saying leave it to the hogger, filter, filter it out to the bottom.
Right.
This, yeah. Okay. I'm. I'm going to, I'm going to make the, the following motion.
Since, and at least in my mind, and I've read everything Geotech had and everything Bonnie Callamine said, and, and I've worked with Bonnie Callamine, I met her thirty years ago, maybe that, she doesn't want to admit that, but I'll admit my age. I, since the material is non-hazardous, and so it's not any different than any other municipal solid waste that is going into the landfill, and, and that has been determined. The, the catch is whether it could be considered PCS or whether it's MSW, and that's where that difference is, it's a, and I'll go back to my first statement, it's an economic question, has nothing to do with the hazardous waste issue. Based on, on the thousand tons, et cetera, I will make the motion that we allow a variance for a tipping fee of eleven dollars per ton of this material to be coordinated with the landfill at, or time and place of when it should be delivered, so that the proper arrangements can be made, and whatever then the total tonnage is for a tipping fee of eleven dollars per ton.
We have a motion and a second to allow the, for lack of a better term, dirt, be allowed to be dumped into the landfill.
As municipal solid waste.
At municipal, as municipal solid waste at the rate of eleven dollars a, a ton. Is there any further discussion?
I, I want to go back and say thank you for, I don't know what economically drove you to buy this business and have to clean it up, but I've been involved in four different hazardous waste cleanup situations, and none of them are good, none of them are quick, and they all cost more than you thought when you started.
And I want to say that I really like the way it looks out there, if you drive by, it's an amazing change.
Well, and, go ahead, David.
Just one question maybe for Ron. Ron, how does the eleven dollars versus your thirty-nine dollars, what is our actual cost? I mean, how much of a hit will the city take at eleven dollars in real money? Do we have any idea?
Well, you, we're ten years into paying an off, a two and a half million dollar loan, we're, we're still paying for the landfill and our operational costs. The landfill has been able to, the only loans or grants that we have gotten for the landfill has been the initial first sell. The last two sells, we have, we have cash flowed those and with our current tipping fee. I'm actually pretty proud of that, because we haven't had to go farther into debt and we are, we are making, paying our own operations, and you've got a facility out there that's scheduled to last for the next hundred and thirty years. We're on where we were hoped to be or projected, I, I think we're doing all right, are we making lots of money? No, but, but we are, we are running the operation efficiently and are, are there more things that the landfill could do? Yes.
I guess my question, can you, can your budget afford, I mean, you got thirty-nine as your.
Oh, absolutely, I mean.
Your budget afford this without a big ownership to the city?
Yeah, Dave and I, if, if it's thirty-nine versus eleven and there's a thousand, we're thirty-nine thousand to eleven thousand, and about a twenty-eight thousand dollar hit to the city that we could have gained in that cubic space if it was at the total fee, but to me, twenty-eight thousand dollars to know that that's cleaned up and we're done with it, we've paid a lot more money for less cleanup in this town.
Well, and let's remember too, that if it had been designated the other kind of soil, we'd be taking it for seven fifty.
Since you're there, Ron, can you give me the definition of a subtitled D facility?
Subtitled D is a, is a part of the federal code for, for waste.
Recovery Act.
Yes.
Nineteen eighty-four, subtitled D landfill.
Okay, so.
And, and there are, and you have to, you have to meet certain requirements in order to be permitted to be a landfill to take the different types of waste, requires the testing to be done, is description of topsoil and spray and monitoring the, the cells and everything else is all, since nineteen eighty-four, every landfill that has been constructed has had to meet those criteria based on EPA requirements started in that year.
It had been.
Dumps before were dumps, now they're actually testable.
Designated as a hazardous waste, it'd have to go to a subtitled C.
Yep.
It's just a designation of the, in the federal code, basically, is what the subtitled.
Okay, so then what, what you're proposing here is that we'll go to a D, ours is by the D side?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Yes. Okay, that's reassuring.
And we have a motion and a second to charge the eleven dollars per ton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you very much, you, it will not be something you regret, I mean.
And as it's been stated, we appreciate your cleaning up the area.
The difference in a dump and a landfill is the difference in a salvage yard and a recycling center, there's a lot of difference. I mean, if you have what it takes, you know, there's a stormwater permit, but I sure appreciate your help.
You want to grab your?
I'll take them for you.
The next item on the agenda is action to approve the extension of a new construction of, I believe, this is a change that should be Wisconsin Street, an error in the designation, approximately a hundred and twenty feet at the intersection of Pine. Do we have anyone here? Oh, yeah, there he is, I thought you were going to say. Designated as the spokesman on.
Corey Byer at the engineering department. Basically, DWU has requested extending Wisconsin Street roughly a hundred and twenty feet, that would extend to their next driveway, and then they have a paved street basically, all the way into their second driveway. Now to do that, we would have to extend utilities as well, curb and gutter, so there's more to it than just adding pavement.
And the estimated cost?
The estimated cost was forty-eight thousand. This was to have someone hired to do all the work. This was to have someone hired to do all the work, and we're probably going to do most of this in-house, except for the asphalt and curb and gutter.
And has Dakota Wesleyan agreed to defray what portion?
Yeah, they have agreed to pay for fifty percent of that, that cost.
Or twenty-four thousand.
Yep.
Say that again? Are we going to cover the other twenty-four thousand? Our budget or?
That's, yes.
Is it quite much you take, or is this going to come out of?
I think he's asking, did Shane say whether your current budget would be able to accommodate the twenty-four thousand?
I, I'm pretty sure that it would, but I don't know that for sure, and I'm not sure where, if we would, which budget we'd take that out of.
Randy, your question, is it contained in the budget, or are we going to get a supplemental at some point in the future to cover this out?
That's correct, yes. I'd really would like to stay within our budgets and.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I don't want that.
Tell me where you're going to get out of the budget, I don't have a problem with it, if we have to go to supplemental, apart from someplace else, and I really wanted to use discretion on that. Figure out what's.
What's the timeline on this?
Benefit us.
If we got the approval, we were going to get started on it, possibly this week, next week.
Well, in the supplementary materials, it says extending this road to the driveway will be beneficial to the city's stormwater system by keeping track of the roads. I think if we can forgive twenty-eight thousand to the school district on a building permit, we can forgive twenty-four thousand on a street that's going to benefit stormwater, so I'm going to move to approve.
I just, I just, I just saw that the street was always in, already in.
And I, now, I, I agree too. My only question, and I think is same as Randy's, is can we do it within the current frame of what we think we're going to do this year, or are we going to have to take the money from someplace else?
I feel more comfortable voting when I know where the money's going to come from.
My conversation with Shane when we brought this proposal forward, it was his suggestion that if we could cut fifty percent, he felt his budget could cover fifty percent.
I second.
Because I asked the question.
That's my question.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the extension of Wisconsin Street. Any further discussion?
I just want to make one other comment, and, you know, I don't want to spend money just, you know, frivolously, and I don't think this is frivolous at all, but when we set up the budget last year, we put significantly more in reserve to protect against an economic downturn that did not come forward, and so, to some extent, I won't say budgets were starved, but there was not additional money put into budgets that usually were put into budgets, because we were not at all confident that the money would be there. Now that the money's there, I think we have a choice between hoarding it like mice, or spending it on worthy projects, and you could spend it by reducing debt, you could spend it by allocating it to another project like the Corn Palace or something, or infrastructure development.
I'm not arguing with you at all, Mel, about this. What I'm saying is, when I get something like this, I want to know where the money's coming from upfront, that's what I want to know.
The one point that I was going to make is during your budget hearings, you did also allocate additional funds, and maybe that's what you're talking about, Mel, into your contingency fund, and if the council would feel more comfortable, we could just kind of earmark that amount, just in case the public works budget did not have that until we hear from Shane when he's back.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm Ed Potler. I guess my only question would be how many other entities or businesses would benefit from this hundred and twenty-foot extension, or is this just really a private driveway that should be covered in full by the university? Thank you.
Well, I think the answer is right now, right now, it's a private driveway, but in the future, there, there's housing development in that area, I think in the future there'll be something, and, you know, I don't know that you need to have a dirt road till two houses are up, in which case you could say, well, that's a private street for those people, so.
On the other hand, there's also the stormwater benefit. You know, that we've, we've got enough issues with that wrong right now, so let's keep preventing.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Action on Resolution Thirty-two sixty-one, Amendment to TIF District Number Thirteen.
I'm just going to give you some background information, and I see Attorney Peterson is going to be here on behalf of the applicants. I just wanted to bring to your attention that you would see that the planning commission held its regular hearing, or had a, held a hearing on this request at their last regular meeting, and you would see that they did hold their public hearing, and as well, recommended approval of amendment of tax increment financing, District Number Thirteen. Again, in your package, you would, just to, this might be relevant to the other one as well, you would see that there is a copy of the ordinance, TIF ordinance is in there, as well as the TIF financing committee minutes, and is the planning commission minutes. So with that, I just was kind of laying the groundwork for it, and I'll yield the floor to Mr. Peterson.
My name is Don Peterson, I'm an attorney, and I'm representing the developer, Pitts Construction. I will start out by saying I had a, kind of a lengthy, long presentation that I made at the planning commission, and at the end of it, Randy Doscher, who sits as an advisor to the committee, said, I want to know two things, and when I answered him, he said that's all I needed to know, so. So, Randy, I'll, I'll make it less lengthy this time. Tax incremental District Number Thirteen to the City of Mitchell was for the MTI apartments. As most of you, I think a lot of you were on the council at the time that was set up, MTI, representatives of MTI came, and representatives of the city, and the development corporation, all got together and thought that MTI, the experience could be enhanced if there was housing available for students right on the MTI campus, and of course, because of South Dakota law at the time, and still, technical schools were not able to build dormitories on their own. So, the idea went out as, well, would there be a developer that might be interested in putting up some apartments on a, on a, the MTI campus? Most of them all came back with the same answer, are you crazy? Why would we want to invest money out on, on, on school property if something ever happened to the MTI? Who would rent the apartments? And why would we want college kids breaking the heck out of the apartments or beating them up? Pitts Development, however, did answer the call, and said that they would, that they would take a shot at it, but then asked for some TIF financing to help for some public infrastructure out at the campus. At the time the, the original plan was put together, there was a call for up to four apartments to have been built, and the site was towards the north end of the campus and kind of a lower area. As a result of some anticipated fill and, and things of that nature, the TID was set up for about a million four, little over a million, four hundred thousand. During the construction or pre-construction, it was determined that the construction costs would far exceed that one point four, just based on the condition of the soil. So the site was moved to the south, which then actually took the TIF after it had been created from a million four to about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it lowered the TIF amount to about a million dollars. Part of the TIF plan, when the anticipated costs were to be at a million four, was that the only way that they, that the TIF would generate enough funds to pay for that million four was if they would waive the discretionary phase in of real estate taxes for all four of the buildings, because that was the only way that would generate enough income to pay the debt service. At the four hundred thousand dollar amount, of course, that changed things. And so, Randy's question was, well, what was the original amortization setup? The original amount borrowed was four hundred and sixty-three thousand, and it was set up to pay off in twenty twenty-nine, and the annual payment amount was anticipated to be about, about forty-four thousand dot plus dollars. So Randy's question was, with the amendment they are asking for, is that going to change and lengthen the amount of the amortization schedule? And the answer to that is no. It will not. His second question is, is it going to lower the amount of the annual payments? And the answer to that is no. The first apartment building pays off in taxes today, that, the amount necessary to cover this debt service. What, what the developer is asking for is that for apartment building number two, and three, if it was ever built, and four, if it was ever built, that they would be allowed to elect the discretionary or the phase-in of real property taxes. And the reason for that is quite simply that with, not dropping enrollment at the, at the school, but with more apartments that have been built in Mitchell, occupancy levels are down a little bit, and it's just trying to reach a bottom line for investors, it's less, it's less inviting with the numbers running. I think occupancy is around eighty-five percent.
That's what I heard, yes.
Yes, when, in the past, it was in the nineties. So, what they are asking for is for this committee to approve an amendment to the TIF project plan, which does not increase the boundaries, it doesn't allow for any more payment, they're done spending, five years are up, so the four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars will be the maximum amount of the TIF, and they're asking that you approve the amendment allowing them to elect the discretionary phase-in of real property taxes in Davidson County for apartment building number two, and, and then three if it was ever built, and four. Now, what the discretionary formula is now, is that year one is twenty percent, forty, sixty, eighty, and then a hundred. So, the twenty fourteen taxes, which are now being paid in twenty fifteen, is the first year that the second apartment came online to pay taxes. That would be twenty percent, but Pitts has already paid the first half, so they've paid fifty percent. And, and as, as the director of equalization reminded me, they paid the taxes, the taxes have been remitted, remitted to the city, and the city has already paid those to the bank, so there's nobody to refund them. And, and so what we've asked, what we changed our project plan to say, is that for year one, the real property taxes would be fifty percent instead of the twenty percent, because they've already paid it. So, that would be a change from what the plan that you have, and we've made that, Mark Pitts was here tonight, has signed that agreement. So, any questions on that?
Is Mark, does the county have that?
No, no.
Is the discretionary out there?
Well, we're willing to waive that, Carl.
I mean, the discretionary, the twenty fifty.
Yeah, they said that.
But the county has.
Yes, yes.
Don, the only question I have is, you know, usually that, that phase-in is part of the TIF from the beginning, why, why wasn't that, you know, all the other TIFs that I'm, that I'm familiar with, that discretionary phase-in is part of the original?
And didn't waive it. In, in this case, Mel, because the, the cost was going to be a million four, when, when doing the math, it wasn't going to, even with four, with two buildings for sure, if there were three or four, there would have been enough increment to pay that million four, but we, we were committed to two for sure, and at two, you, you, you had to waive that discretionary formula to make that work. And, and so now they don't, and, so Randy, the answer's the same, the payoff amount doesn't change, and it will be paid off prior to twenty twenty-nine, because those other taxes will come in, and the amount will not go down.
I'm going to move to approve Thirty-two sixty-one.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Thirty-two sixty-one. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Action on Resolution Thirty-two sixty-two, a resolution for tax increment financing, District Number Twenty-One, the Mitchell Visitor Center, Mitchell, South Dakota.
Thanks. Before we get started on this, I want to just take a couple of minutes. At a public meeting last Monday at the City Planning Commission, I made a statement that the Daily Republic had made a mistake in reporting the square footage of the proposed center, of, of the visitor center. And it is approximately seven hundred square feet, and I think the article in the paper had it something less than six hundred. And so I said that they had got it wrong. What I found out during the week is that they didn't have it wrong, because the documents they had said that it was that size. So, since I said it in a public meeting, I thought I'd take a public meeting to say, I was wrong, and I apologize to the paper. That doesn't happen very often, but. Again, my name is Don Peterson, and I'm here with Kelly and Emily Hohn, the developers of the site for tax incremental District Number Twenty-One to the City of Mitchell. Background, this is a, this is on the site of the old Happy Chef, and that's, it was owned by the Mitchell Area Development Corporation. At one point in time, the development corporation and the chamber were looking at the possibility of tearing down the old Happy Chef and building a, a visitor center, they're a combination visitor center and, and chamber. And it just came to a point where the cost just didn't make that very, very feasible. I think through that process, the chamber did, or the convention visitors bureau did a, a study at what the economic benefits of a public year-round visitor center would do for the City of Mitchell, and Katie is here from the visitor center, and she'll talk about that in a little bit, in a couple of minutes. What ended up happening is, is that the property was listed for sale, and they solicited bids. There were several bids for the property, and the one that was most intriguing, because it was the only one, I believe, that had a provision that they would buy the property, they would tear down an old building, they would construct a new facility at the major gateway into the City of Mitchell. It would be about a approximate fourteen thousand square foot building, it would have three commercial sites, and it would have a seven hundred, approximate seven hundred square foot site for a public visitor center. And they, at the time, when they submitted the offer, also to the, to the development corp said, and that they would allow the chamber, who, or the city, who was ever going to operate this public visitor center, seven years of free rent, other than the typical CAM charges, taxes, utilities, those types of things. That was the offer that was accepted, and so the process started. Now, some questions are, are saying, well, then what happens after the first seven years? Does, do they, did the Hohns kick the chamber out, who was ever operating the visitor center, and, and converted into a retail? Do they jack the rent up to make up for the seven years that they, that they didn't pay rent? And so, in talking with Kelly and Emily about that, and, and of course, some of that's been going on, I believe, in their ongoing negotiations with the chamber on the lease, but it's certainly not, and I can speak for Kelly and Emily, it's certainly not their intent, that at the end of seven years, they hold up the chamber, or kick them out, or double rent. And in fact, in, in the lease agreement that, that they're working on with, with the chamber, they anticipate that the chamber will have at the end of the seven years, an option to renew the lease, and it will be at a fair, a percentage of fair market rent. So, they'll determine what fair market rent is for the area, and then they will agree on some reduced amount of that, whether it's fifty percent, sixty percent, it'll be agreed upon between those parties, and that will go on for as long as there's a TIF. So as long as there's TIF funds outgoing, the, the chamber will have the opportunity, and they probably don't want a twenty-year lease, but they may take, you know, a seven year, and then a five year, and a five year, but those things will be worked out between the chamber and the, and the Hohns. Any questions on that?
The agreement was based on.
Yes.
Not the first year.
No, no, and I'll get into that, Dave, but that is correct. Yes. So, obviously, with, with the building a seven hundred additional square feet and not getting any economic return for that, and then putting in a tenant into that area, rent free for seven years, and then a reduced rent beyond there, we started looking at possible ways to, to assist the, that project. And it's important, I think, to point out that the purpose in the request for tax increment District Number Twenty-One is, is really twofold. One is, and all of you've had an opportunity to read the, the proposed project plan, and that project plan contains all the requirements. project plan contains all the requirements set forth required by South Dakota law in the creation of a TIF. And we can go through those, and I'll try to pass on some of those or discuss some of those. But I think, in essence, as Brian Heisel would say, if this was the first TIF Mitchell ever did, this is the exact type of project that TIFs were made for. We have a building that was built in 1970 as a restaurant, flat roof, kind of cinder block construction, low ceilings. It was used for a restaurant. It sat empty for the last six years plus. All the restaurant equipment has been stripped out of it by the prior owner. The HVAC system wasn't working. The ceilings were starting to cave in. It meets the statutory definition of blight. That's what a TIF was originally created for, is because in communities like Mitchell and Yankton and even Sioux Falls, the cost of tearing down an old dilapidated building or blighted area, putting in new infrastructure or new building in, there still has to be some type of return for enticing or asking the person to do that. If not, then the city eventually has to come out there and tear it down at their expense because it's a hazard. So it seems that this is really what TIFs were originally created for, let's take out old blighted buildings. So number one, I think if the visitor center component wasn't even part of it, just the fact that we're taking a blighted building at the gateway to Mitchell, the main one, and tearing it down and replacing it with a 14,000 square foot, brand-new office complex would be worthy of consideration by this body of a TIF. On top of that, we take that, and I'll ask Katie to come up and talk a little bit about the public visitor component. But we put on top of that that the city of Mitchell, and I think the council, I've heard a lot of discussions about the importance of having this public visitor center. And so here we have an opportunity, again, at the gateway to Mitchell, to have a public visitor center in 700 square feet of this complex, rent-free, so there's really no expense to the city on that, and only the CAM charges to the Chamber. Katie, if you want to come up and talk a little bit about it?
Hi, my name is Katie Knutson. I'm the Director at the Convention Visitors Bureau. And as you know, we've tried to get this visitor center off the ground for several years now. Numbers have changed for the economic impact of six years ago, seven years ago when we started, but the State Department of Tourism uses the number $249 per visitor, per leisure traveler. That doesn't necessarily help us out on the eastern side of the state. It doesn't add up to each visitor that actually spends any amount of money in the city of Mitchell in the county. So we kind of used a different formula. We came down a little bit to $190 per leisure traveler into Mitchell. Now, whether that's them eating, obviously staying overnight is probably a bigger component to that $190 per person, retail and any of that. So with this visitor center, we are looking to, you know, kind of increase our visitors to at least 10,000 more or plus. We hope to have more come through the door. We've never been open year-round. We've only been open May 1 to, actually, a couple of years ago, we tried to stay open through the hunting season to see if we drew any more visitors in, and it was kind of a wash, actually. We had about 1,000 extra people come through. But they're also not used to a visitor center open throughout the year either because we are not a state-funded visitor center like the other ones on the interstates, so we kind of serve a different purpose. But any other questions? If we get up to about 20,000 additional, right now we have 9,000 that come through the door, anywhere from 9,000 to 14,000, but we're only open from eight to six. So we probably do lose a few extra people in that evening hours, so.
Katie, I have two questions. One is, just out of curiosity, what's going to happen to the Little Log House?
It's a popular topic. It's 12, 13 years old. We will put it up for a bid, you know, put it up for auction to see the highest bidder. Lots of ideas, man, men's caveman or whatever, something like that. And then, you know, grandkids and all of that. So it will, we are, we're fully operational this year. I don't know if you guys seen it. We have moved up to the north part of the Jimmy John's parking lot. We're just making do, but positively, we're doing really well. I know on Sunday, we have, we had over 150 people in about six hours, and I didn't check in after that, so.
Well, I just wondered if there was any thought to utilizing it as a settler's hut or something, you know, as a way to maybe entice people to see what else was in town or maybe to encourage the Dakota Discovery Museum to maybe to put some things in there to maybe draw some visitors to that part of the town.
At this point, we're not trying to get a lot of money out of it, but obviously to offset some of our costs going, moving forward. But that's a great idea. We're already kind of, they always kind of pull up and think that there's coffee going to be served out there, so. So, no, it's a great idea.
And I just, the other part is, my impression of the visitor center is to try to get people who maybe were stopping, you know, at I-90 for gas, to stay rather than just stop and go. Is there another purpose? What kind of things go on there? I mean, are things recommended? Are people directed downtown?
They are. And that's why we have the staff that we have. They do a great job. They actually write down everybody that comes in and wants hotel pricing or where they send them to because they booked at the Thunderbird or, you know, the Holiday Inn Express or any of that, or if they've called Corona Village to make sure that they aren't full. But no, their main objective is to keep them in town. Corn Palace, obviously, our other four main attractions, and then to eat and stay overnight, maybe check out some retailers and things like that. But we do, we sell our brochure slots out there for our businesses that want to participate, and those are kind of the first come. We're going to promote your business probably before any of the other ones, just because you wanted to be out there and you took the initiative to put your information out there ahead of everybody else, so. And we do take the time to take all six of our part-time staff out of the visitor center around town every year, and they're basically all retired teachers, and they love this community, and they've lived here, I mean, they all live their life, so they know not just to send them, I don't know, down the road packing.
Katie, right now, you indicated it's around 10,000 visitors that are stopping at the little hut that we have. And of course, one of the major reasons you stop is restrooms, which we currently do not have.
Right.
And I guess, don't want to be funny, but in reality, that's probably your first stop you're going to make when you come along. And so we are probably losing a lot of individuals as a result of that. They probably will go into the, more than likely, over to the gas station or wherever. But when you're talking your 10,000 and potentially going up to 25, this isn't just grabbing it out of the sky. This is working with the Department of Transportation and saying that, I believe, you're actually going to be higher than that, but that number is pretty solid, isn't it?
Right, yes. And because we've never been open more than those six months, we just kind of throw a guesstimate out there that we will have a, it'll be a self-serve kiosk in there, help yourself, but you are on camera. And yes, to the fact that we don't have public restrooms, it would be a nice thing to have, but then our charges, our prices go up as well, too, so.
So will we have them at the new place?
For our staff only at this point.
What about the business? Don't they have to provide a public facility? Must of course. How much do you need? And I don't know, Kelly, if you want to chime in on that or not, but I think that will be something pretty important, that there will be restrooms available.
We'll have the restroom right next door.
Ellie, can you come up and talk at the microphone?
He disagreeing with that restroom. Sure. He disagreeing with that restroom. Oh. That hurts.
I'm Kelly Hohn. As far as the restroom situation, we're more than willing to try and help out if they want to try and utilize a little more space if we need to, to put a public restroom in. I know they don't prefer to have one necessarily. You know, we can definitely help any way we can. They can come into our facility and use our restrooms if need be. We'll have three of them. We also are going to have another tenant potentially on the north end of the building that a lot of the public will definitely use when it gets revealed. I can't discuss that at this time, but.
A C-20, whether we invite gas.
Exactly. Everybody will be able to go in and use the restroom. I mean, so we're more than willing to help out any way we can. If we need to try and accommodate with restroom issues, that's not going to be a problem.
Katie, tell me, tell me why you don't want them for the public there? Just because of water usage? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, who's going to clean them?
That's usually--
So I might have to remove my hat as director and go out there a couple of times. You do have to clean them, I mean, honestly, every couple of hours, you have to make sure that they are--
They take a beating.
Uh-huh. They do.
They take a beating.
Yep, yep. And that's something that I, I would love to have public restrooms for them, but it would eat up, we're only at 700 square foot, and if we're going to have any exhibits from the Indian Village or even down here at the Corn Palace, it's just, and we need storage out there, it would just eat up a large amount of our space.
Which I don't think is extremely pertinent that we have visitor center restroom. We're going to have, you've seen the layout of the building itself.
I have them if you'd like to see it.
And there's going to be, obviously, businesses there, and Kelly has just come up and said that, that there will be accessible restrooms. That's what I think is important, instead of having the little shack that we have. Once you get them stopped, then you've got the opportunity to try to convince them to stay longer. And that's the key, is making sure that they got access to restrooms. I think it's--
And 700 square feet is not--
No.
Very big. I mean, it's not like it's a huge amount of space.
Anything else for Katie? Before we get back to the interesting stuff? So in moving forward, as I said, you all have a project plan, and the project plan sets forth the criteria that's necessary for a council to consider under South Dakota state law on creating a TIF. In addition to that project plan, or South Dakota law, the city of Mitchell, a number of years ago, passed an ordinance pertaining to tax increment financing. And it seems, at least from the Planning Commission and then articles in the paper, that it doesn't seem that there's very much concern as to whether or not this project meets the requirements of state law. It's, there's a blight study in there that talks about the area being blighted. It also, there's a section that discusses economic development, which is another factor. You can either find blight or have economic development, and we think we reached both of those. Clearly, the TIF amount is for $320,000, and the projected tax increment from that over a 20-year period would generate, with the phase-in, by the way, would generate over $500,000 in taxes. So clearly, it's at least projected that there will be plenty of increment to cover the debt. The costs or the areas that they're asking for the, for funds are, first of all, they're setting it up as a grant, which in and of itself is an acceptable TIF or TID project cost. However, even though we're asking for a grant, we did want to show the council and the public what the costs are going to be used for. Demolition of the building, which again, if you accept the premise that that was a blighted area, and under South Dakota law, demolition or removal of buildings is an approved TIF expense, and that's it, comes in at about $48,000. To demolish the parking lot, which will be a public parking lot for the businesses out there, used to the public and the general public when they come into the visitor center, is $9,000. The access to that site is by easement, so it's not a dedicated street, but it is a dedicated easement. And there's considerable work that has to be done on that to widen it and redo that. And so we're asking, as part of the TIF, that cover that area, which is $4,814. The building construction, let's talk about that for a second. The anticipated cost, the projected cost of the entire 14,000 building is right at about $1,005,000. The cost per square foot breaks out to about $103.58. And so what we've asked for in the TIF is not to build Anytime Fitness or not to build the two suites that are for rent, but help us with the 700 square feet that are going to go for the public visitor center, that the Chamber's going to get the rent for free for seven years, and then have reduced rent for the life of the TIF. And so that's what we're asking for. And so if we take 700 square feet by the $103.58 a square foot, that's $72,506. Interest costs are added in and some professional fees in a contingency fund, and so that brings us to the total we're asking for, $320,000. Again, kind of a small amount for a TIF, but if you think about the fact that you're building 700 square feet that you wouldn't have to build, you're renting it for the CAM charges for seven years and then reduced rent after that, it seems that, in fairness, you know, that a TIF would help to phrase some of those costs.
Don, if I might ask a question that's been posed to me. And the criteria regarding whether or not this project would go forward if the TIF were not to be approved, and some of the demolition and that has already been completed.
Right.
So the question posed then is, if it's already been demolished, why do you need the TIF?
You know, that's a good question. It's a little bit like the Morris Construction, and I was going to go into that, Ken.
Okay.
Because under South Dakota law, that's not an issue, you know. But under the Mitchell ordinance, it comes up and says there are certain criteria that have to be, that need to be met by city ordinance, not state law, but by city ordinance. And we started out with the TIF committee and presented and went through the ordinance, and the TIF committee found that the criteria under the city ordinance was met. We then proceeded to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission with one no vote and then Randy indicating that he didn't believe it met the criteria, but the other members all felt that it did. And I'll go through that criteria if you'd like, at least the parts of that that I think are relevant. So I guess down to there's some mandatory criteria that have to be met in order to consider a TIF. One is, and these do come out of state law, by the way. These are just mirrors of state law. One is, a project must be located within a proposed district in which a minimum of 25% of the area of the district is to be blighted or not less than 50% by area. We set forth in the TIF study, or the blight study, that the whole area was blighted. You know, the 1970 building was falling apart, and so we felt that that was met. Two, the project must comply with the adopted comprehensive plan and all other appropriate plans and regulations, and it does fit within the comprehensive plan of the city of Mitchell. Three, the use of the TIF for the project will not result in a net loss of pre-existing tax revenues. The only tax revenues coming off there now are from the old, empty building, and so the taxes are obviously going to go up with what's being built out there.
Fair enough.
Yes. Yes.
Pass the fair enough.
Right now, right. And so those are the mandatory criteria, and I think that they meet those. The city ordinance then goes on and says, "In addition, a project must meet two of the following six criteria." Now, these are all subjective, and I believe that it meets at least two, possibly three of those criteria. The TIF committee agreed with us on that, and the planning commission with, again, one objecting vote, agreed with us. But I'll go through those. So the first criteria was the project must demonstrate that it's not economically feasible without the use of a TIF. And I think that's the question that the people are saying, well, they went forward. Well, just because the Hohns went forward, they sat down with, with the Mitchell Area Development Corporation and said, "We'll pay the price for the land, and we'll build this building, and we'll, and we'll put in 700 square feet for you, and we'll give you seven years' free rent, and we hope that the city will help us out and give us the TIF." And we think that the city will do the right thing. But if they don't, we're people of our word, and we're going to go forward with it. Now, is it economically feasible to go forward like that? You know, I can tell you that is, that is tight. It may or may not go forward. But with the TIF, it certainly is economically feasible. So based on the projections, I would tell you that, that it's, it probably isn't economically feasible to go forward. But we won't know that for two or three years down the road. And the reason is because of all those front-end costs you have. So we believe that, that it does meet that criteria. Again, it's subjective. You could certainly agree, and Bob Beerson did. He said, you know, we're going to agree to disagree on that. But the TIF committee felt that it reached that, met that criteria, and the planning commission did. The second criteria is that the project will eliminate actual or potential hazard to the public. And we believe it met that criteria because it tore down at least a potential, if not a real hazard to the community, and that old building that was sitting there abandoned. Now, Bob said, "But the building's gone now." And I said, "Well, yeah, it is, but it wasn't when they bought it." And again, the anticipation was that the city council would do the right thing and approve the TIF. And so the building came down. With Morris Construction, for you that were on the council when we did that, same question came up. Well, you've already started out there. And Morris said, "You're right, and we're going to go forward with this project anyway. But we believe that the city of Mitchell will do the right thing and help us with that road. But we're going forward under the assumption that you'll do that." And so we're hoping that, that the city council will see fit to go ahead and help on this worthy project for a young couple that are, that are from Mitchell, and they're, and they're cleaning up maybe one of, maybe the most important corner in the community with their building. So we think that it meets A and B, and there's two. A third, a third one that I believe it meets, it says, "The project will not provide direct or indirect assistance to retail or service business competing with existing business in the Mitchell trade area." Now, if you think that the purpose of what the TIF funds are for, are for the visitor center, we're not competing with anybody because there is no other visitor center. Now, Hohns do have Anytime Fitness, and that's going in there. But that's also an existing business in the city of Mitchell. And if you flip over to the next page for criteria, on discretionary criteria, and none of those have to be met, but one of them is that the project involves the expansion of an existing business located within the city of Mitchell. So it's a little bit, you know, flip-flop on which one. And, you know, on one, it's a plus, and on the other one, it's a minus. But I believe that an argument could be made that it hits that criteria as well. So I think, and possibly, if you think that the last one was, "The project will result in additional redevelopment in the tax increment district." Well, they're building on. Hopefully, they'll rent out those additional sites. So we believe it's going to redevelop the whole area. And so it may, you know, it may affect that as well. So that's what we presented to the planning, or to the TIF committee. That's what we presented to the planning commission, and they agreed. They might not agree that they met all four of them, but that they met at least two of them. So that's why we believe that we meet the required criteria. Under the discretionary, one is that the building or site that is to be redeveloped itself displays conditions of blight as established by the provisions of South Dakota Codified Laws, Chapter 11, 9. We believe that's, that's without question it does that. The project involves the expansion of existing businesses located within the city of Mitchell. We believe it meets that. And also, the project costs are limited to specific costs associated with the site that exceed typical. In this case, most of the time, a builder doesn't have to tear down an old dilapidated building before they build on it. And so we believe that it hits that, too. So I think, certainly open it up for questions, but we believe clearly that this TIF project meets all the requirements required under state law. And although Randy and I are going to agree to disagree, I believe that it meets also the criteria of the, of the city ordinance.
And I've also learned I don't argue with three people: lawyers, my wife, Melles.
Well, for sure, the last, for sure, the last two.
But, you know, I appreciate all the information. I, just from the statements I made at the planning zoning committee, is that I don't see that the billings already tore down. It was in disrepair, and whose responsibility is that? Who do we talk, when we have other properties in town that look in disrepair? We go after the landowner, the property owner, to do something about it. As far as them proceeding, I, I do appreciate the Hohns doing it. I totally do. However, I'm looking at it without the visitor center there. Is it something that we're going to do? It's going to, it's on private property, basically. It, if we take a look at, is it going to create new jobs? I don't know how many more employees. Somewhere in the document talks about, for every $10,000 a TIF, you must have a new, one new position. That's in the discretionary. I did read that through again. It is in the discretionary. But still, I just don't feel that this is one that meets the criteria. And after saying that, the other thing that I want this council to be aware of is that we have never set a limit on how many TIFs we're going to have, and how much of our debts we're going to allow to be tied up in, in TIFs. And right now, we're at 28.1% TIFs in our debt. We do this when we go up to 28.75%. Where do we stop? We keep tying everything up for 20 years in TIFs, we're not going to be able to do anything else. And that's a concern I have. So with that, I pretty much know where I'm standing on it. It's, like I said, I really appreciate the Hohns stepping forth and doing something to that property. However, I just, as councilman, I just don't see it. I've been told, whether I'm doing the right thing or not, not, I've been told by at least 50 people that I think what I'm doing is right. So that tells me maybe there is some thought in there. So, but that's where I stand.
I've got a question on, what I've been hearing is, what's the definition of blight? How do you substantiate blight? And I looked through it.
Well, it's statutory. I don't have the code book with me, but it's in the project plan, Dave.
It's in the definitions.
Yeah, it's in there.
It's in the definitions.
And so... It's subjective, right?
It, well, sure. It's, it's subjective, but it's defined in the code. And, and not only, you only have to prove one or two, or you only have to demonstrate one or two things for state law. Either one, that economic development will, will grow from the TIF, which there's an economic development study in there that, that talks about that, or that there's blight. And in this case, we think that it meets the definition of blight. And in fact, you know, when tests were created, as I said, they were created in Illinois, and particularly for the city of Chicago, because there was a bunch of beat-up, dilapidated old buildings that needed to be torn down, but nobody could afford to tear them down and build back up. Well, Mitchell's a lot smaller, but we had an old building down there that nobody could afford because of the size of our community to tear it down and build back something up over the top of it because the economic return isn't there. And when developers go into business, you know, they expect a return. And the only person that put in a bid, I think, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the only people that put in a bid for that property and said, "We'll, we'll build the visitor center, and we'll allow the chamber to have seven years' free rent," and ours in, and we'll give them reduced rent as long as there's a TIF in place, was the Hohns. So it's not like there were 30 developers from out of state or inside the city of Mitchell lining up saying, "Yeah, that's a great deal. We'll do that." There was only one.
I have a question. Can I ask a question? Areas conducive to the need to try and define as blight, that's a catchphrase, which is meaningless in regard to what the statute said. Statute says, "Any area included in slum area in which the structure is building or improvements by reason of: one, dilapidation, age, or obsolescence; two, inadequate provision for ventilation, light, air, sanitation, and open spaces; three, high density of population or overcrowding; four, the existence of conditions which endanger life or property by fire and other causes; or, any combination of such factors are conducive to ill health, transmission of diseases and fatalities, juvenile delinquency, or crime, or which is detrimental to public health, safety, morals, or welfare, is a blighted area."
Right, and any one of those. It doesn't have to be a combination. I'm just wondering, before the council gets into it, if there's anybody else who wants to talk about this?
Yes, we certainly welcome that.
Okay, and also, developed areas of current growth are also defined as blighted. Any area by reason of which, one, the presence of a substantial number of substantial funds, faulty lot layout, relation to site equity, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, deterioration of site or other improvements on the site.
All right, just let these, Carl, let these gentlemen go.
Thank you. Josh Moody, co-owner of Dakota Physical Therapy and True Fitness here in Mitchell. I'd like to say thank you for the council for letting us speak tonight. I'd like to start out by saying it's simply not easy for us to be up here in opposition to this issue. There's not much doubt that this is a nice project. There's no question of that. And even that it'll improve the gateway into Mitchell. Honestly, I consider the Hohns friends, and it's, it's very difficult being up here for me. So it's not a personal issue, although we are competitors. It's friendly competition at best. So for our businesses, this issue is about whether the proposal meets the rules or not, and whether the TIF assistance is needed in the first place. Our feeling that this proposal may meet one or two of the non-mandatory criteria, but it simply does not meet the mandatory criteria as defined for passage. So in addition, it appears like the demolition is not only complete, but footings have been poured. This project is going on with or without this TIF, and that's, that's fairly obvious. So isn't city funding better put to use elsewhere if this project really doesn't meet the mandatory, not the discretionary criteria? I have to say, I found it interesting earlier, earlier on when Susan here was concerned, and there was some debate up here about a basic building permit in Mitchell that, that somebody started construction on before the, the permit was actually obtained. But we're considering doling out $320,000 for a project that is well underway prior to the TIF being approved and obtained, when it's apparently not needed and going to go on anyway. To quote Mr. Heisel, who I assume is a relative expert on these TIFs, The Daily Republic did a very big article in late 2013 when we were in the developmental stages of our business, and he was directly quoted in the, in the article as saying, "This isn't building their buildings. All they get is the infrastructure." Well, in this case, at least partially, it is building their building. So, thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to my business partner, Steve Van Gendron.
Thank you for letting us speak. I'm Steve Van Gendron, co-owner of Dakota Physical Therapy. Part of the reason that we're here is when we went through our developmental project, we did ask about a TIF, and we're told we would not qualify for one. That's why we are expressing our opinion, I guess. We kind of hate to be sour grapes. We agree that this is a great project for Mitchell, and that'll do nothing but help us with the gateway to Mitchell. What we had asked when we did our development, we found out that we had to get an easement to go across Wesley Acres in order to get, get our building permit. In order to get that building permit, we had to get a detention pond, which we had to dedicate 20% of our property, that we were unaware of it being, you know, non-professional developers into that. At that time, we met with Tim McGannon. We asked if we would qualify for a TIF, because the article that Josh had just mentioned just came out a couple weeks before that. He said we wouldn't qualify because we're not developing infrastructure. Everything developed around us, our retention, our detention pond would not qualify as infrastructure from that standpoint. We kind of dropped it at that point. We did our research. We looked at the initial six criteria that the city requires, and kind of felt that, yeah, I guess we probably don't qualify for two of those. We're also quoted in the paper at that time that we weren't going to give out any more TIFs. So it's kind of tough for us to say that we're going to go and spend our money after a two-month delay trying to get an easement just to get the drainage that we were required to do. So we feel like we had to express our opinion because we just feel like it's not being applied appropriately if this TIF goes through. We've also been encouraged by some of our constituents that we need to speak up. We hope that the Hohns are excited. We are excited we are building. We are very proud of our project. We just feel that it needs to be appropriately applied across the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Potzler. I've been reading the articles in the paper, so that's probably the main source of data. But while I agree the visitor center is a great thing, it seems like it's already been decided. It was decided with purchase of the land. So we're going to get the visitor center. The rest of it seems like we're funding strictly a private project and building up and putting onto taxpayers' back $320,000 worth of, of debt. I don't know how the city council feels about that, but I know as a, as a taxpayer, $24,000 to DWU, $20-some thousand to the Board of Education. As a taxpayer, I am a little bit concerned about that. And I hope that you take some of those concerns of the taxpayers with you as you decide if, if we're going to put that much more debt. It's only 0.5%, 0.6% of the debt load that we have now. But we're talking a debt load of millions of dollars. We also know that we have $32 million worth of just one topic, sewer, coming up over the lifetime of this TIF. So let's keep a little bit in mind, the poor taxpayer. And I don't mean physically poor, but I mean the, the extent that, that he is out there. And every decision that you make that increases or spends money is an increased burden for them. Thank you.
I would just like to clear one item up regarding the comment that was made on the building permit. The building was not started without a criteria of a stamped plan in my hands before they proceeded.
John, we were, they're not talking about this building. They're talking about, earlier in discussion, about the building we gave the variance to.
Okay, then, then I stand. I, I was assuming that they were directed toward this building. I had held them up in pits. It delivered me a stamp plan at the time. Okay.
You said anybody could come up?
Yes.
Brian Heisel, Mitchell, Larry Chamber of Commerce and Mitchell Development. Interesting discussion, simple project. We need to get rid of an old, 40-year-old building, build 14,000 square feet of new facility, great gateway. Everyone said it's a great project. We're all in agreement. But part of this discussion is fascinating that we're talking about how you're going to use Kelly and Emily Hohn's money. They're the ones paying the taxes. They're going to pay taxes. And the only reason they're going to pay it is because they're putting up a new 1.5. The other folks out here aren't paying those taxes. They're paying taxes on their buildings. But we're talking about the money that Kelly and Emily will pay because they've taken the risk to put up a new building. It gets lost in translation here, and how you decide that. But there's another piece that's lost. 57%, almost 60% of the dollars they pay go to the Mitchell School District. And the state of South Dakota says, "If you create tax increment district, we will pay that." that. The city and county will hold the school district harmless. So you're getting a sixty percent grant from the state of South Dakota when you create a tax increment district. Who loses? Council's pretty sure, you lose your 25%. You have six mills, $6 per thousand, and the county loses their $4 to apply towards this. So you're losing $10 per thousand over the period in life, but sixty percent of it is covered. And it kind of gets lost in this whole process describing using funds and debt. The other part is, the constitutional debt limit that we relate to, saying, well, we're this far, we're this close, or this much. We all know that there is debt that this city can take on from time to time through an annual appropriation lease purchase. You have $5 million that you're funding at the swimming pool that doesn't count against the constitutional debt limit. How is that possible? Because you lease that property, and you pay that every year. So you have room to build, what's critical is how many new revenues coming in. When Katie was up here, she was talking about, I'll tell you one of the things about tourism that's sure, we're asking about numbers all the time, which numbers do we use? Currently, you collect over $2.1 million in tax, sales tax revenue from the hospitality industry. That's a deadlock certain number. You collect over $700,000 on each penny for three pennies, and that goes directly to help operate. And why wouldn't we want to build that industry? Why wouldn't a visitor's center with three million cars on the interstate and six million people, why wouldn't we want to be present there to drive more of that traffic into Mitchell? We worked for five years to try to figure out how to put up a $1.5 million new visitor's center. We didn't get it figured out. And the reason was, Governor Rounds provided $200,000 in grant funds, we had asked the hotels for a $2 business improvement district, one of our favorite topics from time to time, that would generate over $320,000 a year. We asked them to do it for three years, for about a million dollars. $200,000 from the governor's office, we had a million too, we had $350,000 invested, we had a million five fifty. The hotels evaluated, and in all fairness, they said, we think a lot of people are benefiting, just not us, and they just said no to that project. That really took the wind out of our sails to try to get this done. We put the property up for sale, Emily and Kelly Hohn stepped forward and said, we'd like to propose a new building on that site. No one else proposed that. Two, we will put up 700 square feet in that building in a new facility for a visitor's center. Looked like a home run, plus we'll sweeten the pot with seven years and some options for low rent for the future of it. That was the deal that we agreed to. So how would you like to spend Kelly and Emily's property tax money? You can get a sixty percent grant from the state, because they'll hold the school district harmless and make the payments, and the city and county give it up for a period of time to help pay for a visitor's center, a removal of a blighted area, and a brand-new gateway. I think that's a great project, and I think everyone thinks so. So this TIF makes a lot of sense, and thanks for taking time. Questions for me?
Brian, when you sat on the TIF committee, and obviously abstained in voting on this one because of your vested interest of selling the property, but you made a comment that day that I thought was pretty important, and I don't want to plagiarize, but you, basically, you've been and seen the TIFs from the very beginning, and you had indicated that if we were looking for a poster child project, when the TIFs were first introduced, this would be exactly the type of project we would be looking at.
Tax increment was built to help rebuild your downtown. To tear down old buildings, you're going to run into this at some point, I hope, where we want to redevelop a block and we have a brand-new building we want to put up, and it's going to have some competitive aspects with other properties. This is what tax increment was built to do. We have used it to do industrial development, we have used it to do housing development, all the things we need to do. We're pushing the city ahead in a significant way together, and I think that that's why this project, if this had been the first one, we wouldn't have had quite the dialogue that we've had tonight, because it tears down an old piece of property, it helps them do that, then they are on their own to compete at that point. They have to rent out two other areas to make this economically feasible. And I think helping a young couple that's from Mitchell with a small business, you want to send the signal that small business is welcome in Mitchell, we appreciate their investment, and we're willing to help a little bit, especially when we get something that the community really needs, like a visitor's center. That's why I thought it was a top-flight project. The first one you did was Graphics Packaging, which is an international company, and built the largest building in Mitchell, South Dakota, well over 350,000 square feet, and pays over $160,000 in taxes currently. That was a pretty good investment. And I think we've used tax increment in judicious ways. I know some people are saying a lot, yeah, I think it's the best use of dollars that come in from brand-new investments you could make, but I'm paid to think that way. The wisest professor I had, Don Doleen, said, "Where you stand depends on where you sit." And I understand where you sit. Thanks.
This will be paid off, I know that it's in here.
It's out of twenty years.
Twenty years, yeah.
But actually, it pays off similarly naturally, because they just got a really good.
Yeah, I was trying to find that in here. Oh, here it is, I found it.
I'm Ray Borgan, and I'd like to kind of know why this has to be so complicated. If the Hohns want a new building, why don't we do it the old way? They buy the land, they finance the building through a bank, and then they turn around, and we got the visitor's center that we want, then we pay them the going rate of rent, and we've got what we want, they've got what they want. Why do we have to go through this whole shell game that maybe, you know, maybe I'm interpreting the standards right, maybe the other guy's interpreting the standards right? I mean, if we keep public property, public money, separate from private property and private money, seems to me it's a whole lot simpler. And when you get into the TIFs, and we've gotten into them pretty far, we're $10 million, according to the paper a while back, there's over $10 million spent on TIFs already, and we haven't seen any of that development yet doing us any good. To me, having to put up a visitor's center after spending that kind of money on infrastructure and stuff like that seems like an unnecessary thing. And I just, it seems like everything gets more complicated as we go along, and the more we mix up the private ownership and public funds, it doesn't seem like we're doing ourselves any good at all, any favors at all. And it was mentioned that we're dealing with the Hohns' money. I got no problem with the Hohns spending their money any way they want to. What I got a problem with is the $320,000 in public funds that have to go into this project. I just think, keep them separate, let the Hohns build the building that they want, buy the property that they want, and if we need that visitor's center, if they'll build it, we rent it at a fair and honest rate, it seems to me the whole deal is done, and you don't need all that public money upfront.
I know that the council knows this, but I just, I got to answer that, I have to answer, Mr. Morgan. $320,000 of public money. As you guys know from the project plan and prior TIFs, the city's not going to go to the bank, and the city's not going to go to a bonding company and borrow $320,000 for which they're responsible to pay. Hohns are going to go to the bank, and Hohns are going to borrow the money, and they're going to be the guarantor of it, and the city is simply going to get a check from the county auditor twice a year for the property taxes, and they're going to remit that money to the bank to pay it off the debt. If there isn't enough money in the fund to pay the debt, the city doesn't pay that amount, Hohns do, because they're the guarantor. The city will not pay out a dime in it. And so it's not the city borrowing. Now, it does count against the city's debt capacity, and that's where the issue comes up at times, but it's not, it's not the city going to the well and borrowing $320,000 more in dollars. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I know you guys knew that.
Anyone else have any comment? If not, council, discussion?
Well, I hate TIFs. I think the only one I voted for when I was on the council was the tech housing. And I agree with Randy in the sense that you have to have some sort of limit on the amount of public debt, and my concern in the past has been the exact same concern about how you fund the new pool, Phase II of the Corn Palace, City Hall, whatever it is, if you give away all of your public debt. Having said that, I do think that this is different, and it's different for a number of reasons. I think, first of all, there is a benefit to the city, and that benefit is the visitor's center. And frankly, if the visitor's center was not part of the deal, then I think the case would be much less strong. Ray's point is well-taken. Why don't they build it, and then we rent it? The thing is, that actually costs us money in a way that this TIF does not cost us money. So if we were to do it the quote-unquote "old-fashioned" way, we would be spending public money, we would be spending taxpayers' money, and in this particular case, frankly, we're not. We're unable to borrow $324,000 more, but it's not money that the taxpayer is on the hook for. The Hohns are on the hook for that money. I think that's a fundamental misunderstanding. If this were a brand-new business, and was going to compete with existing businesses, that would give me pause. But if we don't approve this project, and if the Hohns don't go forward with this project, they still are competitors with the people who have spoken tonight. I do think there is value to cleaning up the corridor to Mitchell. I wish we would do something with the old Hardee's building. I wish there would be something on the approach to Sanborn Street. And of course, we'd like to have every business in Mitchell full storefronts, we'd like to have every property well-maintained, but if you can't do that, maintaining the approaches to the Corn Palace is the number-one priority. I do think this meets the requirements. I absolutely agree that blight is a little bit like art, you know? To some people, this is art and that isn't, and to some people, this is blight and that is not. But I do think the city gets a benefit, and I'm going to move that we approve Resolution 3262.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 3262. Is there any further discussion?
You want to go? Okay. And I wrote my whole page of notes as I listened to everyone. A couple things pop up that concern me one way or the other, I guess, and interesting discussion. One, the letter of concern from Mr. Moody and Van Gendron, and I appreciate how tough it was for them to come up and talk, and talk about that. My concern there is to make sure, as a city, that we're looking at all the projects in a fair way, and it would seem to me, just based on the comment and maybe information that they got from the city of whether part of their project qualified or didn't qualify, I don't know if they were misled, but that concern, that's what hit me from their letter. And I appreciate them talking about that. The other part that I keep coming back to is, and as I've read historically, other places that have done TIFs, is who is borrowing the money? And the Hohns are borrowing the money. And I have read indications or instances where the government borrowed the money in hopes of doing economic development and built something that they hoped the tax increment would go up to pay back the money that the government borrowed, that have failed in some instances. Or they got to the end of the 20 years, and they were supposed to pay back, and I'll just make up a number, a million dollars in that 20 years, and they only got an increment increase of $800,000, so they were out $200,000 over that time. That's not the case here. The city isn't borrowing the money, and I don't think we have any TIFs that the city has done that aren't privately financed. And the issue then is taking that tax money from them for what I'll consider infrastructure, meeting these criteria. And the criteria are subjective, and I wrote, as they were read, I wrote down, we might meet about two and a half. And you need to meet two, depending on how you look at it. The visitor's center in and out of the whole thing, maybe muddied some of it, it's positive in some view, maybe negative in others, but to me, the infrastructure part of tearing down that building and putting something new there, to me, meets a TIF. And so I'll be voting for it.
You know, I sat on the TIF committee, and quite honestly, it's a learning experience. You don't know what you don't know going into these things, and there's no school. I think the thing that impressed me the most, from a learning perspective, it's not, just what you said, it's not our money. That the city is not on the hook for this money, it's the Hohns' money. And you look at 20,000 new people coming to town, and 190 hours a day. And is it a bad deal, or is it a good? And you have to weigh that out. Took a little bit of the sting out from my side, knowing that it wasn't the city going on the hook.
And I actually are very much in favor of TIFs. I think it's just a great way to promote the industry and business within the community, because in all reality, you're not out the real estate tax because you don't have it before the TIF is generated. And I just looked at our sheet of the 20 TIFs that we currently have in place, there's only 13 still outstanding, which means seven now are paying right into the coffers of the city, the school, and the county. And that's, I believe, is just a great way to promote industry and business in a city. And I think we've done a very good job in making sure that the numbers are legitimate and good, and being able to pay them off. And Don has been pretty much involved in about every TIF, and I know he works directly with the individuals and making sure that they're not put in harm's way, because it would not be fun to come up personally with these funds if, in fact, in the end, there was a shortfall. Getting back to Randy's comment, though, I think is very good, and I want to make a comment to Steve and Josh when they come up here, and you're exactly right. At the point in time you guys were building, the city has a somewhat of an artificial floor that we have, that we basically have had invited by for years, that once $5 million, we get down to $5 million dollars, we want to keep that off to the side. What's the right number is a question, but at $5 million, we've pretty much said we're pretty much done with TIFs and other debt outstanding and bonds until we built that back up again. Well, Stephanie had put in our report that as of the end of 2014, we are right at $9 million worth of remaining debt capacity at the 5% rate. And so the combination of making the regular payments that we're obligated to do on an annual basis, plus the additional debt that we pay down as a council, we elected to do that a couple times in our budget hearings, we have now increased that up to $9 million. So if we want to be, we are back in the business. But to Randy's point, what number should that be? And... And, and that might be a discussion we'll want to have, maybe in our strategic planning, if you want to put that in, is five million was the number. How long ago has it been since that has even been looked at? And so, I think that might be a good topic of conversation in the future. But I feel that this is a very good project for the city of Mitchell, and it, and it just meets everything that, that we're trying to accomplish with a TIF, and I'm going to support it also.
Well, I just want to make some, some brief comments. I had a conversation this afternoon with Josh regarding the letter that he had written. And as I second the thought that it was very difficult for them to come up forward, and I appreciate not only the letter that was written to the Planning Commission, but, but coming tonight and explaining your position. I, I don't know that it's necessarily that I can apologize to this, to them from, from the city's standpoint in that when they had the discussion several years ago of whether or not they may or may not qualify for the TIF, and they were given information that led them to believe that probably they didn't qualify. I don't know if they had pursued it further, whether or not the situation would be the same as it is now. We'll never know that. But at any rate, I told Josh that I was going to support this, and the reason being, first of all, I don't have a vote on any of this. But I do have a position, and I think it's fair that I state that position. And, and some of the things that I look at, first of all, we have a TIF committee, which is an independent group of individuals that are charged with the responsibility of determining whether or not they do, in fact, meet the criteria. Now, obviously, we've, we've gotten information, and some of it is quite subjective, and I would agree with that. But at any rate, it went before that body, and they recommended approval. Then it goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they also are charged with that responsibility of determining whether it does or does not meet the criteria. They, again, voted not unanimously. I think it was six to one, maybe, that it be sent to the city council with a recommendation for approval. I put a lot of weight into committees such as this, who are independent, and they are charged with the responsibility of determining whether or not it meets the criteria. They, in their opinion, have said that, that they think that it does meet that. And so, they're passing that information on to the council. As, as Jeff pointed out, I think that the, the city has taken the advantage of TIFs previously to help in our development. There are not a lot of tools that are available, whether it be from the state, or the city, or any other entity, to help enhance the development. This is one that does provide an incentive for new development. And if, in fact, it does meet the criteria, then, then I think that it deserves our support. And, and so, that's why I, I told Josh that that's what, what my position is. And, and that's the reason why I would recommend that you support it.
I believe we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Olson.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Trannis.
Aye.
Dozier.
No.
Smith.
Aye.
Charx.
Aye.
The motion is carried and approved. Next item on the agenda is action on Resolution 3263 on a petition for vacation of a public right-of-way on South Davidson Street.
Mayor and council, you, you have some background information in your package. You would see that Porter Leasing LLC has made a request to vacate a portion of their street that's north and south against their property. You should have a, a copy of the petition. You have a copy of the resolution that's before you, and then also a drawing prepared by the owner. Basically, and then I did, we did present this to the Planning Commission at their last regular meeting. And as you could see in the Planning Commission minutes, they didn't see any particular concern of this. Basically, what it is, is the owner wishes to go a little further into the, going towards the east for future construction. So, with that, Mr. Porter is here. If you, he could probably talk to you a little bit more specifically what his plan is. Mr. Porter, comment?
I'm Jim Porter. I'd like to build a dock to the east of our building. It would be approached from the north, coming south for the sun rays to come up, and back inside the building. We need eleven, eleven foot for that, I believe it is. So, we need to go about nine foot and a quarter inches into the right-of-way. When the sun rays back in there, they won't be in the street. So, if they come in during the night or whatever, there's quite a bit, there's a lot of traffic on the street there. So, basically, that's it. The other addition we're doing is within the limits of everything. To do the dock, we would need nine and a quarter foot into that right-of-way. It would leave a forty-three-inch sidewalk to the back of the curb. At this point in time, it's, there's no sidewalk going into that area in the five-year plan. That came from Kerry. This would, if, if you compare this, it'd be similar to the property that was vacated, vacated when Koch did their deal, which is right across from Vernity, and they have a forty-three-inch sidewalk. So, that's pretty much it.
Move to approve Resolution 3263.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 3263. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second reading and adoption of Ordinance 2515 supplemental appropriations.
Move to approve, move to put on second reading, Ordinance 2515.
Second. A motion and a second to place Ordinance 2515 on second reading, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move second.
Motion and second to adopt Ordinance 2515. Roll call vote, please.
Olson.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Trannis.
Aye.
Dozier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Charx.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Action to approve Homeland Security Grant in the amount of nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-one cents for security system.
That's approved.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the Homeland Security Grant. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Action to approve the assessment of the City Hall and Recreation Center.
Just to be clear, this is an addition to what that gentleman was here with MSR?
This is a separate analysis of the condition of that. But it may be somewhat similar. But as we, I guess, weigh the possibility of building an indoor swimming pool, we wanted to also evaluate what the condition of the rec center was and is. And so, I think it was felt necessary that, that we get a, a good evaluation and assessment of the condition of both buildings.
Kind of a follow-up question. Do we know, are we going to get any written costs, anything from the gentleman that was here from MSR?
No. And that is part of the reason why this is also necessary. Basically, the result-
He gave us a visual observation-
And that's all we got.
And that's all we're-
Yeah, that's all we're going to get from him, according to the follow-up conversation.
So, we're going to get numbers, not only here, but for the rec centers.
Yes.
Yep.
And see, that, you know, when I read this, I came down and asked Stephanie, is it in the budget? And, but I really believe we, before we build any more buildings, we need to assess what we have now, what kind of condition they're in, before we start building any more so that we make sure we can take care of what we got. And I, so I, I think it, it is appropriate to take action on this and do it. But I think we need to really take a look at all our buildings.
Yeah, I, I agree with Randy. And, and you know, I think back to the Corn Palace, and some of the things we discovered that maybe previous councils should have, you know, taken care of. And people say, well, why didn't you? Why didn't you? And well, okay, we found it. So, I really think this is good proactive.
And that is exactly what, what came up in our discussions of the pool subcommittee several months ago this fall, is that we needed to ensure that we knew what the condition of the rec center was, since that's a preferred location, so that the council and the city doesn't get into this project and find out there's another five hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar hidden cost that we didn't know about. So, we're trying to be proactive with that.
I went in her office and read it on her desk and asked her, well, this is in the budget. She called me now.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the assessment for City Hall and Rec Center. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Action to approve the wastewater treatment force main project number 2015-12.
We'd like to recommend approval of Northern Plains Construction for the bit of the wastewater force main of three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and thirty-nine cents. That is on the base bid schedule with the, with the base bid alternate of a deduction of eighteen thousand dollars. The original cost was three fifty-nine, thirty-nine. And with the October completion date instead of the August 1st is what we're looking at. We did have another bid, alternate bid schedule. This is for the eighteen-inch pipe. Total alternate bid on that was two hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, with a alternate bid of minus twelve thousand dollars for two hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. We recommend to go with the twenty-four-inch pipe versus the eighteen-inch pipe for future growth.
I think that's important.
John, I, I just have this question. You know, the Corn Palace was done February 1st. So, I'm wondering what guarantee we have on the October 1st completion date? Is there-
Payment or the penalty?
Yeah.
I believe there was, there was stipulation in there for finding them.
Because, you know, I mean-
I don't know the number right offhand, but yeah, there was.
There's incentive for it.
Yeah. Now, this is substantial completion date. This doesn't mean that the grass is going to be planted and everything else.
I, you know, it's just, you can inconvenience tourists, but if my toilet doesn't flush-
Yeah, I think there'd be a lot of people out to get me.
I think one of the benefits, too, because the department went and did the bypass that we talked about previously, which is currently installed, that gives them the opportunity or the option to delay it later and have that cost savings, because we don't have to be concerned about an immediate threat of another break. And then the, the materials that were used for the bypass, they'll be able to keep an inventory and use for future projects. And correct me if I stated any of that wrong.
Correct. You are correct on everything. Truthfully, looking at our bids, you know, we had five pretty competitive bids. Looking at our engineer estimate, I think we were at four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And I believe Jeff recalled asking if we were going to be close to that half a million point when we were looking at that. And we thought we could be. So, you know, I think it was well worth hiring SPN to get this out to bid, and the savings is showing. So.
Move to approve Northern Plains, three forty-one, oh, three nine.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the force main project 2015-12. Any further discussion? And award the bid to Northern Plains LLC. If not, opposed in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Action to approve the water distribution system analysis.
I don't know.
Corey's.
Sorry, ma'am.
Way in the back. No, you're good.
We're looking for authorization to, to do a water distribution system analysis. Basically, this would analyze the current and future water demands, the BY water supply, again, current and future needs for the city, conduct an analysis of the existing water distribution system, establish a hydraulic model of the water distribution system, and review the existing operations of water distribution and water treatment. This report will review water treatment facilities, analyze the facility for service life, as well as cost to repair, renovate, or upgrade the facilities, and assessment of associated costs to operate the plant will also be done. That include utilizing the plant as emergency storage. This would be a planning tool to help enable the city to become more efficient as well as to allow the city to prioritize projects, both short-term, short-term and long-term. Cost of this would be about forty-nine thousand, five hundred.
I'm resisting the opportunity to take advantage of no meat here, but to ask Randy's question, where is this money coming from?
We've got, we've got money budgeted right now for a drainage study, and it was budgeted to have that hired out. We're going to do a majority of that in-house. So, there's going to be a pretty significant cost savings. So, we'll use that money to pay for this.
I think this is, I mean, you know, so often you hear people say, well, you know, the city doesn't do strategic planning, yada, yada. I mean, I just think this is great proactive planning for the future, and I just really applaud the department. I'm going to move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the water distribution system analysis. Any further discussion?
I just had one comment. At the last work session, the council had given direction, or two work sessions ago, about future infrastructure planning needs. The study goes towards that. Yeah, also, the other direction was about what the end goal is of us operating the plant while we have BY water. And this also addresses that idea or that goal identified by the council as well.
I know you might not know the detail, but will this study ask BY water? What is their maximum they could give us? I mean, what if we doubled our water or tripled our water use to BY?